I'd like to call to order the committee, the whole, for October 14th, 2025 at 6:13 PM. Attendance roll call.
Other persons, Wolf.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
Decker.
Here.
Bryce.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Dilghi.
Here.
Madden.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law on Friday, October 10th, 2025.
Thank you. Old business, capital projects, fund budgets, continued discussions. We've had the capital budget items for the last few weeks. Is there anything specific anyone would like to bring up? Are there any questions?
I had one question.
Sure.
I think it was last meeting we talked about the fire departments, the roofs and that, I think, a wall. And if I remember correctly, when I looked at this, those roof replacements are already in next year's capital request.
Correct.
Okay. All right. That's all I got.
Do you want to, I mean, since it's part of the budget, do you guys want to, I think, at some point, we're going to need to talk about the parts for the fire department. Scott, do you have anything, can you kind of go over what you guys know about the roofs for the fire department and the walls? And we can go more detail on this, but I think Scott can give you a primer of where we're at on that.
Okay, roofs. There's the two in question. One is the fire station on Janesville Road. The other one is on Test Corners. We are looking into, looking at different architects to see what is the best roof replacement. You know what I mean? They just got quotes. But what we need to look at, because we're going to have to publicly bid these, and we're going to have to have specs and everything, is, is the book, the quote for the right roof to have there for both of those places. Okay? So we're now working and we're going to have to probably create some type of plans because we're getting, it's over $50,000. We have to publicly bid this thing. But we want to make sure what we do is, do we replace it with the right type of roof? Roof. I don't want to, like, hey, just because it's a ballast roof, do we do the same one? We need to have a little bit more direction. So, and then anything that's over $50,000, we always write a memo, come back to you and talk about it as well. All right? And then we put off the wall thing to see what we're going to do. Because that, we're hoping, let's say we fix the roof at Test Corners, that might alleviate a lot of the issues with the wall. Does that make sense?
Yeah. My main reason for asking was, I think when you came to us last week, it was kind of more of like emergent. I didn't know if that meant the roofs were emergent or the wall was just emergent. But then I saw it in the capital plan for this year and I was like, oh.
The roofs, the roofs make sense to kind of move forward with, you know, for sure. Both of them are at their age. One, you can see already the rust coming through on the one in Janesville Road. So probably when you get into it, the insulation's probably going to have to be all repaired, too. We can put off the wall thing and we're hoping, like I said, see what the roof does and see what it is. I think why we came into you last time was, we were unaware and we are working with them to make sure that they have a better idea of a five-year plan for not just this station, but for all the stations. So I think that no one has caught surprise that, oh, okay, in year 2026, we're doing this, '27, '28, '29. Does that make sense? Because we were kind of unaware of the situation as well since, until we just started doing our investigation. So.
So that amount moved down from over a million to the 450? Is that correct?
We're just doing roofs.
Okay.
That's why.
What page you on?
Thirty-one.
Can I?
Thirty-one?
Thirty-one or the new one?
And didn't we also say last meeting?
The one that was searching.
That we wanted to find out more about the wall before we did the roof, instead of doing the roof and hoping it might fix the wall? Yeah.
But the roof already is over 30 years old. That roof needs to be replaced. It's already at that point of doing it. So we're hoping, looking at it, like, the roof has to be done anyways. It's the wall that's going to, we're looking at different hybrids and attacking it. The roof is the roof. The wall, how are we going to look, do the wall is, is, there's going to be some major discussion with contractors and architects of what to do. We've got a lot of different ideas. I don't know if they're all right. We're going to have to really kind of look into that. That is going to be something that we are all going to have to have a talk about. And next year, it's too close to even look at it right now for next year.
So this was part of our original requests from the fire departments for both the roofs and the walls. We pulled them out because they were just dropped on us at the last minute as well. We wanted to do some investigation on it. What my recommendation is, is to keep it pulled out of the budget right now on there. And then as we get more information, we can bring that back as a separate item as we, as we learn more and what the next step should be. Does that make sense?
So I think that was some of my confusion. So that is all out of this capital budget?
Yep.
The roof and everything?
Everything's out right now. But we're going to come, we'll come back together with a game plan on how to attack it.
So the 450 is just a holding point? We don't know what it's going to cost?
That's the library. You're looking at the wrong one.
Oh, is that the roof of the library?
Oh, wait a minute. Sorry.
Page thirty-one is the roof of the library.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's what you gave me. What, what page is the fire?
We pulled it out.
We pulled it out.
Oh, it's not even in here?
But it was part of their initial request.
That's why I couldn't find it.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
That's why.
We're still looking at it, though. Guys, guys, we are going to do some investigation on this for the roofs and, and the walls.
I couldn't find the fire.
Do you see that question?
Yeah. When did you pull it out? Because I was just looking at whatever, whatever copy was included with our packet and I could have swore it was in there and I was just looking today. So.
You know what page it's on?
Yeah, we're.
What? Thirty? Okay.
Oh, it's a page. I started looking at that page.
So it's along, if you see it, it's kind of, it's a horizontal, starts with fire pagers, poses, and goes down.
And that's for one roof?
No, two roofs. One, firehouse, one and two.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Is that for both stations?
Yes.
Correct.
Correct. But again, I have to come back to you when we have real details of this and how we're going to bid this out, specs. I mean, again, we have to really know what type of roof. This is, there's bidding, public, I want to let you know that there's a lot more detail work that we have to really do.
I guess what we're asking for is a pause on that part of it.
Yeah.
We'll, we're going to be coming back in the near future on it, but.
Yeah. And that, that was my only, my only question was, when you guys brought it up last week, it's like, we don't know anything about this yet, but we know it needs, we need two roofs and a wall.
Yeah.
And so it sounded like it was something that you were going to be coming to us in the future for. And then as I was looking through this, I saw the dollars in there for the roofs already. So that's.
We're allocating it, but not necessarily approving it.
I mean, we could come back to you and say, guess what? We did all the costs and everything. Can we just move it to the next year based off of what we found and the roof type and stuff?
With a, with a little bit of information that we have so far, I'm uncomfortable moving forward with it as is.
The other thing, wasn't there parking involved with it, too? Or is that just?
No.
Just a temporary, just a temporary, on Station Four, just temporary repairs?
Station Four.
Station Four.
Parking, Station Four.
So what does a, what does a temporary repair mean? Is $21,000?
Oh, that, that is for that, that's for Test Corners to.
Paint it?
Yes. I believe it's for some striping.
But it's just for striping?
Some striping and some minor repairs, like some areas, that are patching areas. It's not for a new parking lot.
Yeah, I didn't think that's for a new park, I didn't know what temporary meant. So if it's just patching, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that we are planning on going forward with.
Okay. I just thought there was some parking in the original. We talked about parking.
Okay. Anything else with the capital? Alderman Bryce, you?
So is this like where I can say, like, if I'd like to take something out of the capital?
This is where you can say whatever you want on these.
Or what I, what I think?
You, absolutely.
Okay, great.
But give us a page number, though.
Yeah.
Page nineteen, the police department, the interior drones.
You want Chief to come up while you're?
No, I don't want the chief to come up.
Okay. All right.
I mean, I like you and all, but I don't need you to come up here unless someone else has a question for you. So I guess me, I just, I'm not in favor of buying two interior drones. I'm in favor of buying replacement batteries for the existing drones that we have. But I feel like, and I know it's only like 6,100 bucks. It's like pennies in the bucket for this, so I understand what I'm saying. But at this point, I feel like that's just more of a want. And Chief even said as he went through it, it's a want, it's not a need. And at this point, I feel, and if I'm wrong, I'll let Chief come up here, that if there was a situation, like where they needed to clear a house so badly that they needed to get interior drones, they would call the SCIT team in and SCIT already has interior drones. So we would be able to use theirs at that time. So that's why I just think we should maybe try to bank our 6,100 bucks for maybe something like what Ryan was talking about before on our tour. That is just, I guess, all I have to say. That's all I got to say about that.
Chief, do you want to come up here and explain what the use of this would be and what the benefits were? And I know, I do know at one point you did say this is a lot more than a need, but why don't you tell me what it's all for? Tell the council.
I will confirm, I did say it's a want versus a need with this. And we do have, it would be a redundant capability with the SCIT team. The SCIT team has broken up into a different section called the TRG, which is the Technology Resource Group. This is one of those things that we're trying to get as many drone operator pilots for exterior drones here in the city of Muskogee, which we've had a lot of success stories with that, and adding interior drones so that we have the capability here for our officers, not necessarily relying on the SCIT team to call out in the response, to have quicker response at the time.
Is there, is there a time limit to bring the drones in, like with the dogs or anything? That's why we have a dog now? Is, there's no, no time limit?
No, there's, there's no time limit, especially if it's a tactical situation.
Other than getting in there quickly? But yeah.
Correct. And that's on a case-by-case basis.
So how much batteries are minute out of this 6,100? Is that what it is?
If you deny the 6,100, we'd find it somewhere else in our replacement, in our operating budget to come up with that.
So how many drone, you have no indoor now, right? That's what you said?
Currently.
But you have two outdoor now? Because, oh, we're adding one, right?
We, we have an outdoor drone ourselves and the city has one separately that we've actually used as well through the IT department. We've been very successful with that drone as well with Barb's help. But we, no, we do not have interior drones. Yes, ma'am.
Is there a charge when you have to call and use the interior drone from the team, from the SCIT team? Do we get charged?
Well, we pay dues to be part of the SCIT team. And part of our dues go to collectively with all those other municipalities to, you know, respond. As an example, there was a search warrant conducted today in the city of Milwaukee and then also in the city of Brookfield, where sometimes our employers or employees are part of those teams. And as far as an individual fee, no. But it is part of our dues that we pay to continue to outfit that team.
Yeah. So if, if we use them or they use us, it doesn't matter?
Correct.
Okay.
So that 6,100 is for the actual drone or is that for someone being licensed and trained and?
No, that's for, that's the, the quote that's in there is for two interior drones, basically to expand our drone program.
Because it's batteries, too, doesn't it?
Because they, I'm assuming they have to be trained on using them.
Correct.
And that's included in that?
No. The price that we're asking for is for the physical drones themselves.
So the additional?
The training is all, it's all encompassing. We're going to pay for that, you know, separately.
Out of operating.
Make sure that they get licensed and that'll come out of operating. This is for the specific equipment request.
And do you know the lifespan of these drones typical?
I, I don't know off the top of my head, but the technology just keeps increasing. As we've discussed before, they're shrinking and the technology is increasing exponentially every single year.
But the price isn't going down?
Actually, some of the prices have gone down significantly over the years.
They actually do go down, but if you, for the same amount of money, you get better technology. For less money, you could get, what, 18 months ago, you could have gotten for less price. If that makes sense.
Isn't that Moore's Law?
No. Like, if, like I say, the drone he's buying right now, let's just say it's a thousand dollars. Three years from now, that exact, a drone with that technology might be $800, but the new thousand-dollar one might have more features. Anyone else? Alderman Decker?
Am I understanding you correctly? If, if you, if you don't get the 6,100, you're going to, you're going to get a drone anyway out of somewhere else in your operating budget?
No. I was, because if you notice on the, the request, it's for a couple of replacement batteries. We put it under that line item with two individual drones. If you, what Alderman Bryce is saying, correct me if I'm wrong, is like, she's okay with the batteries. She doesn't want to pay for the interior drones. The interior batteries are a relatively small price and we'll, we'll cover that through normal maintenance and normal expenditures. We're just putting it underneath there as a place marker, so to speak.
Sorry.
If you go without the 6,100, that is for the interior drones. We'll still have replacement batteries.
Sorry, I misunderstood.
How often do you guys use those drones to clear a building? If, how many times would you, like, have you been like, man, if we had an interior drone right now, we'd?
Right now, here in the city of Muskogee, we haven't used it yet for any individual thing. But it is, it is something that's coming up more frequently with our TRG and the response on barricaded subjects and other things in the county. It's been used a few times, but this is something that we're trying to stay on the edge of what's the best technology to keep people safe and be ahead of the game when it comes to interior drone usage. It's going to happen and it's going to be relatively frequent in the future.
Let me rephrase the question that Alderman Dilghi just asked. In the last five years, if you would have had this technology, do you think, was there any opportunity that you may have used it?
Possibly. Yes.
Alderman Wolf?
I, I think we just leave it on there and we keep our department with the needs that possibly they could use something that could be life savings for their self or for other people in the environment that they're going in. I'd rather send a drone in there and have that shot than send an officer in there first or a dog in there first. And $6,100, you know, 6,100 here, 6,100 there, I understand that. But at the scheme, the scheme of things, if we're only going to take 6,100 out of this whole budget, if that's the only thing we're looking to do, I say leave it in there.
Well, right now, I don't have a motion for anything, so it is in there unless they get a motion to remove it. Alderman Madden?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I was thinking about an incident that I heard on the radio that was going on where I think that drone could have been extremely useful. And I thought we had IT send a drone. I know they had a drone looking for where somebody was in a house, but that one didn't go inside, right?
Currently, the drones we have in the city of Muskogee are out, exterior drones. They're not meant to go inside the house.
Yeah, I think we should leave it.
Anyone else want? Alderman Decker?
On the flock cameras, 27,000 for 2026?
Can we, can we finish this part first before we jump over to that?
Sure.
I just don't mean to, we can bring that up. Any more discussion on the drones? Okay. So not hearing anything, we're going to leave it in. Now your question.
Chief, on the flock cameras, 27,000?
What page you on?
Page 22. We currently have seven flock cameras. Is that correct?
Yes.
And this 27,000 is for two additional?
Yes.
And then are you projecting two additional for 27 and 28?
We'll take it on a case-by-case basis. Right now, we are incrementally increasing our flock footprint for the city of Muskogee to figure out exactly what makes the most sense in terms of investigative footprint. As I've mentioned before, Muskogee is ripe for this type of technology to help us as a force multiplier. We've had several success stories specifically, because if you haven't paid attention, our egress in routes here in Muskogee are limited. So we could pick up a vast majority of what goes on here and we've had a lot of success. And if you paid attention, the last time I was here, we picked up a domestic violence suspect that was stalking somebody at a business here and we were able to tag that person as they entered our community. We had officers waiting at the victim's place of employment as the car showed up.
I guess I would tend to be opposed to additional flock cameras because of concerns about mass surveillance and so forth. I've been reading that other communities have actually gotten rid of them altogether. And I think, I think that I would be at this point reluctant to increase the number. We may differ, have a different point of view on that, Chief, but I think we can.
Do you know which ones? Because southeast Wisconsin, this is pretty much the standard. And it is, all of the, our neighboring communities, or at least the vast majority of them have them. We've actually been a little bit behind in terms of implementing this technology based upon making sure that we rolled it out when paying attention to the things that you're concerned about with surveillance and Big Brother, so to speak. But I can tell you that in our time, we've had numerous success stories and zero instances of impropriety. And I will tell you that it will be dealt with swiftly if it's used incorrectly or against the law.
Chief and I had some very long and extensive discussions on this for years.
Years.
About, you know, because the Big Brother part of it scares the heck out of me as well. It's, I, I had Captain Fonz do a demonstration, run my license plate and tell me where I've been for the last, you know, three days and it tells you.
Were you arrested?
No. Tells me everywhere I've been in metro Milwaukee in the last, you know, it had a couple of false positives on it, but for the most part, I mean, it's, it's a very, it's a very useful tool when you're looking for somebody bad. The policy that the chief has internally, I think, is pretty comprehensive on it. The policy that the vendor has is pretty comprehensive on it. I, you know, I, I understand people's concerns on it. And it's one of these things where you try to outweigh, we've got cameras, there's cameras everywhere. It's just part of where we are nowadays. There's, you know, so it's up to you guys, but that's where we're at. Alderman Wolf?
I, I don't think you can go down any block without some type of ring or something on a doorbell or whatever, where every street is recording something. And I'm not in favor of that, but, but it's reality and it is helpful for safety and security. It can be misused. I think that, hate to put it this way, but first of all, I was going to ask, there's no licensing or anything with this that we have to pay for costly, or is there?
This is a repeat, if you look at it. Of course, of course, the technology is $3,000, basically $3,000 per year per camera. And that's how they're getting it. And so it's, it's recurring cost.
I knew that. Okay. I just wanted to get that out in the open. To add three more cameras, I guess, I hate to put it this way, but $27,000 is less than hiring another police officer. You know, good or bad, however you want to take that, not that we wouldn't like to hire another police officer, but.
We need that, too.
That would actually, you know, it's an extra set of eyes. It's like the six-man off the bench in basketball. You got this going for you that you can use it as a tool to, to do what someone can't do in a place that they're not all the time. It, it's actually a benefit. I, I remember, if you remember correctly, when you first came up with this idea, I wanted to add more cameras immediately. And, and I'm against the Big Brother type idea. So I think we'll be, like you said, we're behind on this and, and the crucial areas that we needed in, where the entrances, exits are, are definitely needed, I think, especially, especially with our amount of manpower we have or don't have at certain times. This is, again, the six-man off the bench. So for $27,000, I would guess that if you want to add $100,000 to that, make it 127,000, you can hire another police officer on a consistent basis.
Any other comments? Motion on this? Was, was that a motion that you were making to remove it or not? Or you just wanted confirmation?
I would like to make the motion to remove that item, please.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any further discussion on this? Is this?
I have, all right. So it's going to be $21,000 a year, no matter what, if you don't add two more cameras?
Correct. It was already pre-approved to the 21,000.
Right. Yes. So it's only $6,000 more a year to get two more cameras. So no matter what, it's going to be 21,000.
Correct.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Let's just do a quick roll call vote, starting with Alderman Wolf.
So yes, we keep it, no, we don't?
No. His motion is to get rid of it, so a no vote keeps it.
No.
Wolf said no.
Elder person Wolf. I'm sorry, got to do a couple of things here. Elder person Hamel.
No.
Elder person Decker.
Yes, remove.
Elder person Bryce.
No.
Elder person Schrader?
No.
Sorry. And elder person Dilghi?
No.
And elder person Madden?
No.
All right. Any other items on the capital? Alderman?
While you're there, Chief, I was just going to ask about the dispatch recording.
What page?
That should be 2027.
24. 50, oh, that's 27. I'm, my bad. Sorry. I saw it.
It's on the same page, yes. That's a 2027.
2027. So we're not even going to worry about that.
Any other items? There is an item in here, and I'm going to make a recommendation of moving. Jenny, where would I find the trail stuff?
On page 78.
No.
All right. Page 78, there's a horizontal listing of different items in there for, looks like parks.
Halfway down, future trails.
Future trails. The second line item in there says trail maintenance for $25,000. Does everyone see that? So Alderman Wolf had asked to have something put on, in the budget for trail maintenance, a line item. And when we, the original request was to throw it into capital, however, I think it's, I don't disagree with the expenditure, but I think it should be in operating. And we can move around stuff in operating and put that 25,000 in there and not have it in capital because it's something that's going to be, you know, ongoing. Now, I don't know if we need 25,000 for it. And Ryan, and Ryan, I got some questions for you on this. So what, what the Alderman's looking for, and Rob, jump in if I'm not saying this correctly, is just to get a regular program that we're going through, similar to like a roads, like patching, crack ceiling, all of that. The number was just pulled out of air, the 25,000.
Yeah, it was just a stopping point.
So, so my, my question would be, you, you've only, we're not approving more people for it. We're just proving that you do it. So you, you've got a finite amount of people, finite amount of time. I think we agree with doing the maintenance thing. Is there a monetary thing to it? Or?
I mean, we, if we could, and I don't want to speak for Jenny, but we could move it to road oils and asphalt, which is just a general maintenance to where I do my crack ceiling, driveways, approaches, stuff like that, to where we can move it in there and I could allocate, again, I don't want to speak for Jenny, but we can make sure that that 25,000 out of our road oils and asphalt budget is strictly just for trail maintenance. And if some carries over into the other, if it's not going to trails, it's going to be going to a road that's filling regardless. So it would probably make more sense that way.
Yeah. My whole goal is, is to make sure that we have a maintenance program and it's going to be used.
Oh, I agree with you.
And not that, well, this year, we're not going to do any trail maintenance and then next year, we might not. And all of a sudden, you're back to road programs where you're going to say, well, now, now we need 75,000 bucks to redo this whole piece over here.
Right. And that's.
Yeah. So as long as we have some type of, of tracking that we know it's being done, I don't have a problem. I mean, I just picked out, and I think I picked, what did I pick? 50,000 for something else at one time and just put a number in there. So just to, just to get you guys excited about, let's start a program. So.
Currently, when we do repairs now, that's the budget it comes out of. Alderman Hamel rides his bike through the city for me, lets me know where everything is. But anything major, like if we had to do a stretch, say, from Starbucks to Kohl's, I'd be coming to Capital saying, hey, this is something that we need to borrow for because this whole stretch needs to get repaired. So if we just want to increase our road oils and asphalt, we'll continue to do that maintenance. And once Scott and I finish our pays the rating for the roads, we're moving to trails, then I'll have a better idea of what we need to do, the immediate fixes and then potential future stuff that we can budget for.
Yeah. I just want to see something get started so that we're not in a surprise in five years.
Right.
Where we're starting to be right now, it's starting to be a little bit of a surprise. I mean. I mean, when you start seeing weeds grow through cracks and, and being higher than footsteps, you know, someone dragged their foot, they could trip on it, whatever you want to start looking at, like you said, if you can cut.
Also same thing, we can incorporate our crack sealing with the trails also.
Yeah, start doing that stuff first, maybe get another 20 years out of this stuff. So, okay. Whatever you need to do, as long as we, as long as we got a program started, it's tracked.
Alderman Hamel.
Yeah, I was going to say, operations makes a lot of sense, because most of it's just crack sealing. Or sometimes, yeah.
Some patchwork, yeah.
Patchwork, yeah. But it's not huge sections that are going to be replaced, and I'm glad you mentioned that, if there is a larger stretch that should come back to us.
We would budget for it, absolutely. Because then that, spots like that, which is the same reason why we rate everything, is would kill our operating budget, so.
The only question is, do you have the time to add this in and start doing some work on trails?
Yeah, we're complaint driven, so as we go through, you know, we monitor everything, but I don't see right now any huge repairs. I mentioned this.
No, no, just crack fillings. I'm just concerned about maintenance, yeah.
But to be clear, there is a finite amount of public works crew we have.
Right, that's why I asked, yeah.
The crack sealing actually gets hired out, so we would work with them.
See, then you have, then if we start adding money a little extra, then you can get that out, so that's something, that's something.
That's really typically happens, they're going to leave collection anyways, so.
So if somebody's doing, they're doing crack sealing on a road and they're next to a trail, can they check out the trail as well since they're already there?
And that's, we are just about done with our PISA rating for all the roads. Next week, we're moving to trails. Crack sealing is coming in a couple of weeks, so if there's something I can do an immediate fix, I can take care of it this year, and then we'll have a game plan moving forward.
So we're going to move the, this 25,000 over, or just, and we're going to move it in operation?
We'll eliminate it from capital, and we, you've seen some emails going back and forth, we're, Jenny's constantly making changes until we have this budget set, probably this week sometime. So we have the ability to move stuff around.
Are we going to increase 25,000 or no?
We'll, we'll, we'll increase that, that line item he was referring to.
Okay, so then you have money to start looking at some crack sealing.
Yeah. Alderman Decker.
What is the level of operating funding now for maintenance?
For, for this specific thing, zero. You know, it's kind of as needed, like if Ryan, I mean, there's nothing, we, we have this pot that he uses for roads and, and things, but.
Road oils and asphalt is, if we replace the culvert, we have to replace the asphalt over the top of it. If I have to do any patchwork, crack sealing is huge, depending on what I have towards the end of the year, that's why I usually wait. I will give my top five roads, the areas, they let me know how, how far I can get, it could be 40, 50, 60,000. By increasing this, we'll make sure that we take care of the trails, but at the same time, we're only going to increase for taking care of the roads at the same time.
I mean, it's ideal, if you have a road, you're going to crack seal on, if there's a trail, take a look at that at the same time.
Absolutely, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's where this money will come in handy, so.
Yeah.
Is, is 25K going to be enough?
We don't, I just threw a number out there, so don't ask me.
Yeah, we haven't done it yet, so. Alderman Dilghi.
All right, I don't know if you want to finish up that particular item, you're talking about moving that, but I have a question regarding.
Do you want to vote on that?
Yeah.
Let's, I want to hear his question first.
It's, it's related to trails. Yeah, it's about the We Energies Trail right above that item.
We'll, we'll tackle that separately.
Okay, all right.
Any further questions or discussions about removing the 25,000 from capital and for the trail maintenance and moving it and making room in it in operating? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Do you have a motion?
Oh, yeah. Someone make a motion for this. Make a motion to.
I'll make a motion to move the 25 from capital to operating for trails.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now Alderman Dilghi.
All right, right above that item is the, looks like 300,000 in the 2026 column for the We Energies Trail, which I could have swore in our discussion at last meeting, we were basically saying that, that was a no-go, right? And where we ended up on that?
Yes. That's, that's where the discussion went, so we would need to remove that.
Okay. But we haven't done that yet?
No.
Okay.
Hold on just a minute.
So you're making a motion to remove it?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to remove that 300,000 for the We Energies Trail.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I got a question.
So on that, there are, and Scott, I may need your assistance on this. So this is the one that there are grants available. We wouldn't qualify for, my understanding is, we wouldn't, there aren't funds available for next year if we wanted to do it. Is that correct?
The TAP funding is not available till 2029. The money's allocated for '26, '27, '28. So '29 would be the first time, talking with the DOT who runs TAP funding, where they would have funding for us to do. So again, it's, it's, and also too, if you guys go ahead with this, I need a resolution that you guys are committed to doing this. It, it's a big deal, because they don't want communities to say, yes, so we're going to do it, and then we realize what the cost is, and then we, we back out.
If we go forward with the TAP funding, right now, to remove it, no. So what Scott's saying is, there, there are funds available, they're not for a few years. I think it's something that we may definitely want to look at, because you can get free money or very good funding for trails, that's something to look at in the future. But it's not something that we're going to be able to do in this budget. So we can bring that back as a separate thing and then start walking through what the process is for the application and make you guys aware of things like if we get money for, say we, we use the TAP funding and we get money for engineering and design on it, and we do that, and the numbers also, and after we have engineering and design comes back, and our portion of actually the construction is more than we're willing to do, and we don't do it, then we have to reimburse them for everything we've gotten for engineering and design. So I think you guys just need to be aware of the implications of the grants if we go that route. But it's not something that we need to do on this budget.
If I remember correctly, when you were telling us, you estimated engineering costs 10% of.
Construction.
Project cost, construction. And you said this project could be like a $3 million plus project.
Yeah, and we have, guys, we have nothing. I, I mean, I'm like, we have no idea, and if you give that number to them, I don't want us to hold to something. We need like 30% plans done, cost estimate, and you have to submit everything like a DOT like project for this.
Right, but at those, at those numbers, I think all of us kind of turned our note to it at the time, so that's, I'm just.
It's just not a good decision right now to do it. Yep.
Alderman Wolf.
Well, first of all, I think the numbers are inflated, and, and now as you see gas prices are coming down, so I believe they're inflated. Second of all, we need to move this down for future consideration, because I think when we started talking about this, the cutoff was in October, maybe the end of this month, for applying for the grants, that part of it, which I, I know.
You can apply each year, it's just for the next round.
But I think we need to move this down in the columns.
Just move it to 27.
So we can have further discussions about, if this is the, you know, I'm going to go with the bang for the buck theory again, if this is a good bang for the buck, this is a nice improvement, it can last us 30, 40 years. We have the funds available that need to be spent on community stuff. I, I guess what we, what we would have to do is work, work with Franklin to see what they did to come up to us, to see what, how much that was and whatever. But there are some concessions you can make on building this as well, so without getting into too much detail, we, we just move it down.
So just make a motion to amend the motion that's out there.
Because it's on what, 26?
Fun for 26. Do you want to make a motion to move it to 27?
Sure, just for discussion purposes, and, and we'll see where we are with, Scott's talking 29 or something, but just to keep the dialogue open, at least for one more council, just to make sure that we're not, we're not overlooking a good bang for the buck. That's, that, you know, that's the only way to put it, you know, because we have the funds from landfill that, that can be used for this now.
Can I get a second for that?
I'll second.
He's asking to amend it.
Instead of removing it, we're just pushing it to 27.
Yeah, just move it a year down.
So it's not in this budget, it'll be, it's on the five-year capital still.
I, so I made the motion, right?
Yes, and you seconded it.
Okay.
Any further questions or discussions on that? Do I need to do a roll call, or are we going to have some?
I actually, I do have a question. So if, if, if we're wanting to remove it, we can't just bring it back at some other time and talk about it?
Well, let's plan for it.
You, you can, but we try to keep, if, if you have, if it's something you think you're going to do in the next five years, we should keep it on the plan, at least, so it's at least kind of on the horizon, it's not committing us to anything, it just, it, it's a marker that, maybe a reminder, you know, however you want to view it, but it's a good thing to keep on unless you're absolutely thinking that, no, we're not going to do this at all.
I mean, rather than exhausting it right now, we can exhaust it next year or the year after, just, just for dialogue, we, we need to invest, if we want to do this, we need to investigate what a real cost would be, you know, or how, how we would approach doing it. Other than that.
There's no harm in doing it this way, I guess.
We, we've moved stuff from year to year to year.
We push stuff around, move stuff up.
Many, many years, yeah.
All the time. Further discussion on this? Do a roll call vote.
Are you doing any amendments?
Roll call vote for the amendment, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, to move it down one year.
Elder Person Wolf.
Yes.
Elder Person Hamel.
Yes.
Elder Person Decker.
Yes.
Elder Person Bryce.
Yes.
Elder Person Schrader.
No.
Um, Elder Person.
I have a question.
Let the vote go through first.
Elder Person Dilghi.
Yes.
And Elder Person Madden.
Yes.
All right, so further discussion on the motion as amended. Alderman Bryce? Oh, you can ask.
No.
No? Okay. Any further discussion on the motion as amended? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes, thank you. Any other items in the capital budget?
I know.
All right, we're good with capital, as is? All right. Moving on. Old Business Mayor's proposed 2026 operating budget, continued discussion. So you should have received some emails this week from a couple, a couple small miners, stuff that, as Jenny was finding, things to move around, she sent it out and explained it. Any questions? One thing while we're, while I'm asking that, I'm going to say it out loud, and then actually I'm going to need your input on this, so it's probably the reason majority of the people are here. Part of my budget proposal was to make adjustments to our healthcare that we offer to our employees. And one of the, our healthcare as came, as the renewal for exactly what we have right now is roughly a 9.5%, 9.5% increase over the previous year. So we've looked at, we've looked at different options, and some of the options that were presented to us, I incorporated into our budget, and I'm going to, I'll just go through what those were. The first one was to up the out of pocket, or the buy down of the deductible that we're doing. So that is transparent to the, to our employees. Essentially.
What page are we on?
We're not on any page.
Okay.
I'm just talking about our healthcare. What?
Yeah, page.
Well, yeah, there's a paragraph, I guess, yeah, if you look at the, the letter, it's in there, but I'm just going through and explaining what we, what we have in there, because it just talks slightly. So within the, the recommended changes that I had submitted for this budget, the first change was to re, to lower the, or, I'm sorry, increase the deductible that is to the insurance company that we're self-insuring. So essentially, we're, we're raising it, it was at 3,000, we're going to raise it to 5,000, and we're, we'll cover that difference. That saves us roughly 40,000, I believe. Let's see if I've got that sheet here. It was roughly, if I, if I recall, that was roughly 4,000. So right now, our deductible for, is 3,000 for a single person, 6,000 for a family. That's the transparent part, our employees don't see that, that's what we're buying from GHT. The option to increase it to 5,000 and 10,000 provides us with a savings that is transparent to our employees. The other recommendation that I had made was to up the employee deductible. That is the part that when they go to the insurance, to the hospital or care provider, that after a certain dollar amount, they start paying. So currently, it's $250 for a single, $500 for a family. My recommendation is to increase that to 500 and 1,000 for the employees. So they would have a higher deductible as well on that. The other changes that I was recommending would be to change some of the office visits, the cost, the co-pay for office visits. So currently, it's $15, and it would go to $30. I'm trying to find this sheet. I apologize, this sheet.
I'm sorry, this is really confusing. Can we get a, look at what you're looking at? I know we were given this, but it's just confusing to follow you without us having this.
Sure. I don't know if I have it here, that's why, I'm just kind of going through. We had covered it all. I can, I can get you a printout, but I guess what we're talking about on this is, we're making slight adjustments to the plan that will impact not only the cost, which will get us to a, about a 1% savings over last year, but it also does impact our employees that have to use the health insurance. So, I mean, that was a direction that seemed that council wanted to go, and I can get you the details on it shortly. I'm just asking you, am I headed down the right path with that?
Mayor?
Yes.
If I'm, get this correct, the coverage stays the same, it's just going to increase what they put into it slightly.
Correct, yes.
So, I'm so sorry.
Yes.
I thought we were voting on what we were going to make changes to for the healthcare tonight?
We will, but I'm explaining what it, I want to get your approval to make sure that we're on the same page for the budget.
Yeah, so are we voting, so are we voting on it tonight, what we want to change?
We can, yeah. I mean, the budget, it's part of the budget.
Yeah.
So the budget doesn't get voted on until next week, but if you guys are against what we're doing, yes, we will pull it out and make the changes for that.
Okay, great. And that is, do we get a little copy of the little sheet?
Yeah, I, I will get that for you.
Okay.
But I want to make sure before I go and make those copies, are we okay with?
Oh, is he? Somebody's getting.
Okay, good.
Lieutenant, yeah, Lieutenant Rosowski just wanted to make some copies on it.
He's so useful.
Yeah. Any, are we headed down the right path? I mean, you guys are looking.
So far, it seems like we are, but without something in front of us, it's, it is hard to follow.
Can we just take a quick two-minute recess?
Sure.
Well, Rosowski makes this.
Two-minute recess, we'll get back.
Two-minute recess.
All right, we're back in session. Sorry about that, I grabbed the wrong sheets when I first started, so I'm going to have Kate go through this, because she's much more polished than I am.
Okay, so we're starting over from scratch.
We're starting over from what we, what we did. So my, part of my operating budget was to make changes to the healthcare benefits for our employees. Kate will go through what those changes, what those proposed changes are.
All right, thank you.
So, so is there going to be dollar savings with this as well, when you tell us each line?
That's literally on this sheet. So you got two sheets.
That's it, that's it on this one, okay.
Yeah. This is what I'm, I've been working off of. So essentially, what the mayor was saying is that Cunningham and Butler came, presented us with some options. We had an initial 9.5%. That's what their renewal came back at, and gave us some options to kind of buy down some of that percentage. So the increase in total was about $218,000 over the 2025 budget. So the first change that we looked at, or they recommended that we could do, was to increase that base plan, and meaning, moving the deductible from a 3,000, single, 6,000 family, to 5,000, single, 10,000 family, but then also move the HRA funding up to kind of account for the increase in deductible expenses. So just making that plan design change alone, when we go out to the market, you can buy, you'll get a better rate and buy down some of that increase with that, to the tune of about $45,000.
Okay, so, so, so people know, the difference is, if it's a single, 2750 versus 4,500. So if it was 3,000, that's $250, they would have to pay out of pocket, now it'll go to 500 out of their pocket.
Yeah, so that's the second.
So that's, that's part of the equation you got to tell us when you go through.
But that's not part of what she's talking about now, that's the next step.
That's just the next bullet point, yeah. So that's, the option one was just to increase the deductible, and then to increase the HRA funding in proportion, so then individuals, oh, yeah, would only pay 250 or 500, depending on if they're a single or a family coverage. But there is another option that addresses adjusting the deductible up by an additional 250 and 500 to bring the single deductible to 500, and the family to 1,000.
Right.
And that would result in an additional $28,000 in savings.
Just so, I just want to make sure that the employees that are here understand that's what's going to happen, because they don't have this paper in front of them, right?
I have sent out some information to employees, just to kind of inform them as to what the proposed changes are.
We had a chart up there, they could see it.
Okay, so the first item that she said has no impact on the employees, that's the $45,000.
Yeah, I have a question about that. So you're, so, just so I'm clear on it, when you increase the base, you're increasing, it, it just helps you when you're going to buy the insurance, get a lower rate?
Yes.
But you're covering that additional amount, so the employees aren't realizing any of this?
Correct, so there would be no impact, it's just a better, we're able to buy.
You get a better rate, but then you're also covering it for those employees, so the employees.
It's a higher deductible.
You get a better rate, you're having a higher, like, you pick a higher deductible on your insurance, so you get a better rate. But then the city is going on to pay that difference in the higher deductible. We are paying it. The employees will not realize any of that cost.
Correct.
So I'm misunderstanding, when I look at, so I'm going to just use single, basic plan, current, 3,000, single, HR, HRA funding, 2750, new plan. So that's $250 that they'd have to pay, right?
Correct, yes.
So new plan is 5,000, single. Single plan of HRA funding is 4,500, that's 500. So technically, i- if they use it, it's $250 more out of their pocket.
You're right, but that's the second step of the savings.
Yeah, that's just the second proposal. So the first proposal was not to change the out-of-pocket deductible expenses that the employee would, would have to pay.
Okay, so I'm looking at this chart following you over here, what I should read.
Yeah, so it would just be that increased base plan and HRA funding, which is about a 40, about $45,000 savings. So that's like right here.
That would be the only charge. Yeah, so I'm looking, I'm looking at this, you're looking at current proposal. Okay.
So if you're looking at the chart, then if we were to increase the out-of-pocket that employees would pay up by an additional 250 and 500, moving the deductibles to 500 and 1,000, that would then save the plan about $28,000. So that was the, the second proposal that was incorporated into the budget.
So that's what I was talking about, now we're moving over there.
Yeah, yes.
Other chart, so that's, so that's the 44, or 45 and 28.
Yes.
$1,000 savings. And we're going to move into the second line under proposal versus first one, okay.
Right, so that's kind of, so basically that kind of.
So there could be some more out-of-pocket to them, but not a lot. And, and hopefully, I guess when we go through this, the, the idea is to deter them from going for small reasons to the doctor, rather, you know, I'm a hold and I, I'm going to go, I'm going to go for something that's more drastic. Okay.
So then the next kind of phase of this is looking at our medical copays. So, you know, we have right now, you know, I can go through all the copays, a $15 primary care copay, we'd move that to 30. A specialist visit is $30, we'd move that to $60. The copay for urgent care would be moved to, from, I believe it's 30 to 50. And then some of the pharmaceuticals, the, the tiers of drugs would be adjusted as well. So we would not be making any recommendations to change the generic, sorry, I'm getting confused, the generic tier. We would be moving up by about, what is it, from 75 to 124?
Preferred.
Sorry. Am I reading this correctly? Let me go back to my chart, sorry. From generics, we'd stay the same, preferred would move to $40 from 25. Non-preferred would move from $55 to $80. And then specialty meds, which are currently $55, would move to 20, pay up to 25% with a cap at $250 per prescription. Sorry, I was looking at the wrong thing. So that would be, you know, an, an additional savings of 90,000 is what the projection is, if we implemented those copay changes. And those will have very varying impacts on employees that utilize the plan differently. So it's very hard to summarize the total impact on that, but that's what it was valued at per GHT and our consultants.
Now, just to point out, the mail order, if it's ongoing, things look like for 90 days, stays the same. So they kind of try to get you to go to mail, and if you, if you know you have an ongoing prescription, so it was at 25, for generic, it stays at 25?
Yeah, we didn't change the generic.
Generics had all the levels stay the same.
Yeah. And the, the final recommendation is really more of a implementation of the Family Advantage Health Plan, which the consultant kind of walked through, but basically is a program where if someone is on our plan right now, and then decides to leave the plan, to go to a spouse's plan, we will pay $100 per member per month to defray the costs of their premium, and then we will pay out, the out-of-pocket expenses associated with them being on that plan. The idea behind that is that we will pay less overall, just not having them on our plan, because a family currently is about $27,000 a year, and that's the cost. And the, what Sandy had mentioned at the last meeting, the ACA cap is around 22,000, so that's where we would realize that savings.
So when you say cover the difference, $100 per family member, correct? Is that what you said? And then cover the difference? So that is the difference in cost between that plan?
So essentially.
And then the ACA. Is that what it was, if I remember right?
We, we don't reimburse, we wouldn't reimburse the premiums per se. So like, if you had a $100 premium on your spouse's plan, we wouldn't give you $100, we would just give you $100 per member per month to kind of go towards the premium expenses. But then all the other expenses related to your deductible, your out-of-pocket expenses, would be paid, reimbursed, I should say, through the Family Advantage Health Plan. So the assumption that was made in the presentation is that if we were able to move seven families off of our health insurance now onto Family Advantage, we could realize up to an additional savings of $94,000 a year.
And you said it's seven families?
Seven, yeah.
Yeah, because that's all preception here at the 94,000.
Yeah, that's an assumption, and we have.
Got to take the chance.
I think right now we have 56 in the family tier.
So 1/8.
I think we have 97 or so who participate in the plan overall.
So those changes total a savings of 157, about $157,000. Of the ones that I'm recommending, those four. Correct.
Well, that would be, how much, it would be more than 100?
257,000.
How much?
250.
You said one, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, 257,000.
Kate, on this sheet?
Yes.
I just have a question, I'm confused about the maximum out-of-debt, or out-of-pocket deductible, coinsurance, copays.
Mm-hmm.
The current plan?
Yeah, so.
The base plan, and then the proposed, looks like it's.
So we're not.
It looks like they're flip-flopped. Is that something we're not even?
It is correct, I had the same thought. So essentially, we are not, we're not moving the out-of-pocket maximum in proportion with the deductible. So we'll, the HRA funds will be paying down most of that when they satisfy the deductible. And so since the out-of-pocket maximum isn't moving up, they'll actually be paying less out-of-pocket under the 5,000, $10,000 deductible. Plan, if that makes sense.
7,300. I don't even know.
I'm still confused, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, so essentially, right now, we have an out-of-pocket that goes up to, you know, 15,000, as you can see, that is not changing in the proposed budget.
Right.
But we have, our, our deductible is going up by 3, 2,000, so our out-of-pocket max is, for the deductible, coinsurance out-of-pocket max, we have an additional 500,000 for the single and family layer. So we're kind of starting out higher, and we're going to end up eating through that faster, because we have the higher deductible. So the actual, since, you know, if we were to move the out-of-pocket maximum in proportion, then we would pay the same amount out-of-pocket, but because it's staying at the 15,000, but we're moving up the deductible to like 10 for a family, you can see how that would result in.
Right, we're moving it up, but we're paying the difference. The city is paying the difference.
Yeah, in the HRA funding. May I explain, do I?
It's still confusing to me. Just the maximum out-of-pocket moves down.
Right. So at the, the maximum out-of-pocket, under the current plan, you move from 3,000 to 3,500 to, which would be the deductible, coinsurance maximum out-of-pocket. So you carry down the 3,000, and then you add the additional 500 for the out-of-pocket, for the maximum for deductible, coinsurance, and then you move that $35,000 and take that out of the 7,350. So if you, and then that leaves you with, I don't do math in my head, but somewhere in the, I think it's $4,600, that's how we arrived at that $4,600 line. And then, so if you follow that logic down on the proposed, we start at 5,000, then we move to the addition, so we're not moving the out-of-pocket maximum, so it's additional 500, so it's $5,500, then move, so it's basically 7,350 minus $5,500, which is 2,850.
It's confusing. Yeah, no, this is confusing, the way it's laid out here.
Yeah, I can, I have a, an explanation from Sandy, I can forward you the email with it, but that's essentially because we're, we're paying more upfront, and we're not increasing the maximum out-of-pocket, it takes up more.
And it only deals with the few, very few people that would maximize their healthcare for the year, where they're hitting the maximum out-of-pocket. Most don't do that, and if, if you are one of those people, you'll be paying less than you would be currently.
Yes, I think that's a good way to put that, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, if you can get me a better explanation, like I said, it's confusing the way this chart is laid out.
Fair enough.
So, what if we don't agree with your recommendations?
Then we make adjustments in the budget.
And we do, do we do that now?
Well, you have to tell me if you disagree, and then we have to come, either if you have specific things that you want to cut in the budget, or we come back with some recommendations, and you guys make the choice from that. I mean, you can go either way. What would be the part in here that you have a problem with?
Well, what I would do is, I would increase the base plan with the HRA funding, so really it is then no impact to the employee, but it saves us money, right, it'll save us like $45,000. I would not increase the employee's out-of-pocket deductible, even though you're going, only going up by an extra $250 or 500 if they have a family plan. But if there's a guy making like 50, $2,000, he's going to get a 4% raise, which is like $2,000. And you're going to make him pay 250 bucks, like, that's 1%, so really, you only gave him a 3% raise?
Well, if, that, that could be true.
Yeah.
For one, let's, let's start with the base, we need to do something with our health insurance.
Yes.
So let, just let me, let me finish, and then you can talk. We need to do something with our health insurance, we cannot afford the path we are on right now. It will eventually bankrupt the city. So we need to start making changes to it, and we try to find some that have the minimum impact to the employees. And while your assertion, your assertion of, yeah, their cost would go up 250, and they have, say, a 4% raise, wherever that comes out, it might get all eaten up, and maybe, and then some, on the health insurance portion, that's only if they're using the health insurance, not everyone does. So typically, I mean, a lot of, I mean, a lot of employees never touch, especially the younger, single ones. But regardless, we need to make some, we do need to make changes to our plans somehow. The 250 and, 250, $500, 2500 deductible is still way under the standards of what most people get for health insurance.
I agree. Can I keep on?
Yes.
Okay. So I would increase the base, and then the HRA funding would not really be noticeable to any employees. I would add the Family Advantage plan, so if people do have the option to go take their spouses, that would save us another 94,000. I would be in favor of changing the copays for prescriptions, not doctor visits. Because, I mean, they're, like, a specialist, I mean, there are some, there are some city workers who specifically have our health insurance for their children, who don't have an option to go elsewhere, for their children. And like, if they have a type 1 diabetic child, they have to go see that doctor like four times a year. So instead of paying 120 bucks, they're now paying 240. So once again, we're eating away at that raise. And a lot of the city workers don't get paid millions of dollars. They get, city work, historically, and a lot of ours, they take these jobs, their jobs, for one, they like them, right? A lot of them want to stay here, they like their bosses, they have some pretty great bosses. But they take them for the insurance purposes. So if we keep just eating away at like things that's going to affect them, like, I mean, they do need some money, I'm not trying to say they don't need money, but if we keep trying to take away whatever small 4% we give them, by, they have to go to a specialist, or for whatever reason, a kid falls and breaks their arm, they have to go to the ER, right? Then they have to go to orthopedics, and, like, it's, we can't just keep eating away. So I would say the increased base plan, the RX copays, and then the Family Advantage, and that would still save us quite a bit of money. Because I realize that we can't just keep on the same path, but that is a pretty good savings with very minimal impact to the broad spectrum of our city workers, who we want to keep. It's, it's like a value, right? Like, if we take away all their stuff, we're going to get employees who are fine with having no stuff, like, they will call into work, they're always sick, they don't show up, this and that, like, we have really good employees.
I don't.
And I really think we should try to keep them.
I don't think there's anyone up here that would disagree that we, there's no one up here that would say that our employees are not top-notch, there's, I mean, I, I think we would all agree with that. We get our work done through our employees. I mean, we, we, none of us are successful unless we have hard-working, good employees, and we're blessed to have that. That being said, these recommendations are based on benchmarks of what other municipalities are paying. So I, the, the cold reality of it, and I don't like this, but I, you know, I got a responsibility to the taxpayers here, is we're, we're offering a plan that's much better than any of the competitors that we use for benchmarking our pay and everything else. So we're trying, we're trying to make something, and this, your 4%, that necessarily won't happen every year on this, it's just this year on it, you know, we're making the change, and hopefully, we can keep this going forward, and we won't, because of these changes, specifically the increases in both medical, especially medical, and prescription copays, that's where we're going to get our most savings out of this long-term, because it, it puts more shopability and ownership of their healthcare purchasing choices going forward on this. So, anyone else?
Oh, I wasn't done.
I, you, you, you got, let somebody else talk, and we can.
Okay.
It's not a debate. No, well, does anyone else want to talk first? We can let her talk, but I would, I don't want to.
I mean, really, we talked bang for the buck again, that's the word of the day for me. We haven't even talked about spousal surcharges, which a lot of other people do, and there'd be a big bang for the buck. We're giving the option to, what, what, $100 per person, per family, you know? So if you got four people, it could be $400 to move over. So we're not even talking about a, a surcharge to try to force them to move over, we're giving them an option, and still coming up with a pretty decent package here that's, you know, I hate to say, everybody's insurance goes up all the time, and, and I know mine didn't go down, and, and matter of fact, we even changed companies and displaced me on some things that I do. But I, I believe the mayor is right, you know, we're at the point, and I think Bob has been fighting this issue for a while, on insurances, is that we're at the point where the cost is getting, getting crazy. where the cost is getting, getting crazy, and we were supposed to have a, what, 9.5% increase, just to stay the same, so we couldn't absorb that year after year. You know, if you look at COLA that's coming out for social security versus what Medicare is gonna do, that's eaten up all the raise and maybe more. So, yeah, I understand that, I, I agree 100%, nobody wants to pay for insurance, it's, it's a nice luxury to have and it's there for when you need it, so it's like a safety net, so unfortunately, I think so far what we're doing looks good, without looking at some of these other things where we could actually dig in further and save a lot more money, that we're not trying to do that as well, so.
Alderman Schrader.
Yeah, I was, I, I, I agree with Rick and Rob on this. I, I do, inch by inch is a cinch, yard by yard is hard, we've gotta start picking away at this a little bit, and there's probably more we could do, but I think this is a good first step, and we were told over and over by the experts that we have the Cadillac of the insurance, that we have literally better than anyone around. So, I mean, it's been a good ride, we love our employees, we wanna make sure that they are healthy and taken care of, but I mean, everybody's gotta tighten it up a little bit, and, I mean, these budgets are getting harder and harder, and they're just gonna get harder and harder going forward, and we're all, we're all in this together. We, and we, we, we spend the city's money, we spend our constituents' money on this, so that's where I'm at with this.
Alderman Hamel.
Yeah, I, I agree as well, something needs to be done, because we can't keep on going down the same road, otherwise it'll get to the point that is devastating to us as a, as a community. I, I like it, I would like to see the spousal surcharge in there, but I understand why it's not, because bluntly, it, it sucks. So, but I think it's, what's being proposed is still a very good overall package on, on the benefits.
Anyone else? Yes, I just wanna make sure everyone else got a chance to talk first.
Okay. So I mean, I get we have to make it, and that's why I said we should make some changes, but all the changes could really impact our people, and I know we have the Cadillac of insurance, and I listened to the presentation, it was very good, and we are not close to benchmark, and by doing some of this, it moves us closer to benchmark with things, but if we're, like, if benchmark is our goal, then moving closer to benchmark with pay should also be the goal. And I don't mean to pick on chief, but the chief of New Berlin makes more than $10,000 than the chief of Mesquite. So, that's just my point, is like, I'm still saving over 100,000, thanks. Yeah, I'm still proposing stuff that's.
You could say that about elected officials, too.
I'm still saving over 100,000, I'm not saying we do nothing, I'm, still have over 100,000 with the savings here. And it's barely, it will barely impact the people who work in our fine city, and we can continue to have good services, and it will bring us closer to benchmark, that's all, that's all I'm saying. But whatever, that's what I said.
So, so you did mention pay, and I, I should respond to that, we just, we did do a salary study two years ago, and while our chief is not where he is in pay for what he deserves to be, his range is. So he does have the ability to get there, and we have escalator, we purposely put escalators in our compensation package, that if you're below mid-grade, that you get an extra bump every year to get you to midpoint relatively quickly. So we do benchmark pay for our communities as well, and we do look at that, okay, you know, every periodically, we just did it two years ago, we'll probably be looking at it again another two years, 'cause you can't do it every, every year, but, you know, this, that, the, the comment on pay, I think, is one that we do look at, and, 'cause we wanna be competitive. Now, just because a position doesn't, a, a, an individual in a position might not be comparable to somebody in the same position in another place, the range is comparable, and the idea is to get them, to give them the opportunity to work their way through that range, so they can get to that.
And I understand that, but I'm also just saying, they're below, on the lower end of the range, and you're trying to take, have them, and you're trying to take away a benefit that's keeping them here in our city, is what my point is, that I was trying to say.
In full disclosure, I'm making these change, I'm on, I'm on our insurance, so I mean, I'm not doing this blindly, I, I understand the impact firsthand, as somebody who still goes through, you know, regular checkups for health concerns, that, I know, I know what this, there's, none of this was done lightly, but we, like I said, we have a responsibility, yes, you could temper this and, and maybe change some of these things, these recommendations on it, I guarantee next year you're gonna come back and make them, so you're really doing a one-year thing. Alderman Wolf.
There's always someone that makes more, and if you wanna compare just police chiefs, the police chief of Milwaukee makes more than the governor. But anyway, that's enough on that. Salaries, I, I, I'm not comfortable really discussing salaries until we talk about pay raises and we do it as a pay raise, rather than as a salary. I try never to base things on, on salary. You can make a lot of good or bad decisions by doing that, and, and unfortunately, in public sector, people know the salaries more than they do in private, and, and not saying that they do know them, but they, they can find out, I guess. But in private sector, it's, it's never talked about in the open, really, on what people make, I should say never, but for a lot of positions. And it's, it's like Rick said, they'll talk ranges, and I think that's what we, we need to do, and, and right now, I hate to say it, we're on the insurance side rather than the salary side, and when salary comes up, we can discuss on where we should be, on what we wanna do for compensation for salary. Right now, we're talking about benefits compensations, and I, I think we need to stay focused on that. And the nine, I'm gonna go back to 9.5%, we did last year, I think we went up as well, we probably shouldn't have did that then, we should've started this process, Bob, when? Five, 10 years ago?
Years ago, yes.
It, it's been a battle, been going on for a while, nobody wants to replace the Cadillac with a Chevy, and nobody wants to take things away from people, and nobody wants to give a small raise. But unfortunately, the reality of life is, sometimes you have to make difficult decisions, and I hate to say it, we're up here to do that, if you like us or not, if you like our decisions or not, hopefully they're correct, and we learn from them if they're not, and we move forward and, and correct them in the future.
Anyone else? How do we wanna tackle this? Do you wanna go through these recommendations one by one and vote on them, or good where we're at, or how, what's?
I, I would move to keep it the way you have it. I'll make a motion to keep it as, as is.
I'll second that.
And, and just so you know, for the people who don't agree, you can make a motion to amend something out of that, just for the new people here, just, I like to be upfront and let people know what their options are when we do things.
Any further discussion on this?
Can I make a motion to amend?
Sure. Uh, no, motion's on the table, she can make a motion to amend. You can, you'll need a second, but yes.
Okay. So my motion to amend would be to increase the base plan HRA, and increase the RX copays, and to do the family advantage health plan.
Is there a second for that? Going once? Place, dies for lack of a second. So further discussion on the motion as made. I do wanna let employees know, and you guys know as well, Kate will be working, department heads will be working, to explain how these impact our employees, we're not blind to how this has impacts to all of you, some of you more than others, based on, you know, how you utilize your healthcare. None of these choices are made, you know, in a vacuum. We're, we're trying to make the system as functional going forward as possible, you know, I don't wanna get to the point where we're laying people off and, and making everyone else work harder and other things, and yes, maybe we could get away this year without doing that, but eventually, this is the type of stuff that erodes into that. We need, there's so many things that we need to do in our future, that this just helps set us up to go down that road a little easier, so. With that being said, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Against?
Me.
It passes. Thank you.
Right.
Thank you for the respectful discussion. All right, so that was the part of, that was a big part of my budget as far as getting through. The other part that we need to discuss, I mean, you can talk about anything, so if I don't bring it up, feel free to bring it forward, raises, we did talk about that, part of my, my, my recommendation for raises for employees are to do 2% in January, and other 2% in, in July. Overall, that's a 4%, but it does have less of an impact than if, it has about the same impact as if we did 3% in January, however, it's better, is better for the employee, because it does get them further along the scale at the end of the year than they would if we just did 3% straight. Any disagreements with that?
I'm abstaining from raised discussion.
All right. Let it be noted that Alderman Bryce is not participating in the pay part of that, so. We're good with that, all right. The other big change that I had in the budget for savings was to move the road program, take, our road program had, typically has $750,000 in it, in the operating portion of it, I removed half of it, with, leaving 300 and, what, 350,000? 375,000, I'm sorry, in there for the road program, but the plan would be to change to a capital improvement, capital improvement plan to tackle our roads going forward. $750,000 a year isn't denting them, and we've had this discussion numerous times, we need to do, find some way of being more aggressive. My plan would be to do a $5 million borrowing, or if you guys change that number, but my plan is to do a $5 million borrowing every other year, using half of that, so if we did a borrowing next spring, we would use 2.5 million for next year for the road program, plus what's, what's ever in operating, following year, we'd use the other 2.5 million dollars, and that would be a, a borrowing that we would do going forward. That is not something that you are committed to going forward, the only thing you're committed to is, for one, right away, that the operating portion of the budget will only have $375,000 in it versus what we've had 750 in the past, and then we will bring in, and have, we'll have more discussions with Scott, and we can talk about doing our, how mu, the, if we're gonna do 5 million, 4 million, 6 million, after budget, and you're, you're, you're not committed to that until you actually vote on it and approve it. So it's a separate item, but just realize that the budget as is right now has $375,000 in the road. My intention is to supplement the roads going forward with a borrowing, which we can discuss and pass at a different date. Alderman Schrader.
I have a, just, since we're talking about that road budget being cut in half, we got a memo today from Johnny about $50,000 that, I'm just wondering if that could be added to the road budget?
It, it can, yes. Your answer could be yes, no, it's a matter, you know, do we need to or not, but we can have more discussion on that. Anything that we made changes to in the last few weeks, we can put that wherever you guys feel like putting it at that point, so we've, I mean, I think we have all the necessities covered where we're at right now, we're not making any real fatal cuts or using one-time money for anything, so, yes, that's something you could, we, we could do that and make, you know, based on where she, that 50,000 we got, and we lowered a, a revenue source, so it, it's, the overall budget's the same, it's just we lowered a revenue source and increased an expense or vice versa. So whatever you do, the, the overall spending's gonna be the same, no matter what, for the total budget, it's just a matter of what, what canister you wanna stick them into. Alderman Wolf.
Just so we're clear and we understand, i, if we borrow the 5 million this year for the next two years, right, we would go up 17 on our tax base per home, roughly, per whatever dollar it was, so the median home would be 17. And that'll, actually, that'll go up in 27, it won't even go up immediately, right?
And I don't have that chart in front of me, if you're referring to the chart that's in my.
Let me rephrase it this way, that the first increase will be 17, and it says, oh, that'd be 20, 27 is the next one, I guess, would be, or whatever, so on top of that, it'd be another 22, and then the following year or so, it'll be another 13, so the total would be 30, 40, 50 some dollars for the increase for so many years, and then we'll kinda break even if we, if we follow the pattern.
It gets to a point where I think, on the median house, it was like a $70,000 impact over, after like four years, and then it remains level and has no impact after.
So, so my question is, if we go up 17, so then technically, the following year will go up 22 plus to 17.
Correct.
And the next year, it'll be 13 plus to 22 plus to 17.
Right, the end result, if you add all those up, was about 70.
Yeah, 68, okay, I just wanna make that transparent, if we decide to do something like this, 'cause we all know we gotta do something with the roads, you know, I was not in favor, which I did come out and say that on the dropping the 750 in half, looking at where our tax base can come in, I'm looking over the whole entire budget, I can make some concessions on that, I, I believe. The question is, do we wanna spend, borrow 5 million, or what do we wanna borrow, and how long do we wanna do it? And of course, the answer to that is, if we borrow the first time, we don't have to borrow the second time, we can skip, go to the third or fourth time, or, or play it by ear, or whatever we want, so every year, those will be coming back to us, but hopefully the 7, 375 stays in per year, if, if allowable, so.
The, the idea is just to pre, present a plan to the community on how we're gonna address it, and that's why I talk about the every other year, we cannot hold future councils to anything, so.
Right, and I just wanted to make the point that it's the 17 plus the 13 plus the, so it adds up every year.
Overall, it impacts about 70 on a 450.
It's not just like 17 more, it's already plus the other we put in, okay.
Yes.
Just so that's transparent.
Alderman Bryce.
So, the idea would, we would borrow 5 million every other year, so 2.5 million this year, but then we would also use 375 of our own money also?
Well, none of it's our money, but, you know.
Budget money.
Budget money.
Yes, we would use 375,000 of operating supplemented, so.
So really, then we would do 2.875.
Sure, whatever that number is, yes. So 2.5 plus 375.
Okay.
So we would borrow 5 million upfront.
Correct.
At 2.5 per year.
No, we would borrow 5 million upfront, 'cause it makes the most, makes the most sense to do it every other year versus every year.
You got it.
Questions, comments? Are we good?
Are you able to talk a little bit about, like, as the years go by, what our refinancing options are? If we had, with interest rates high right now, even though they're lower for municipalities, as, as time goes on, if interest rates were to lower, what?
So, so every borrowing that you do has, what's referred, has a window called a call date, so it's not like a typical mortgage, or car financing, or anything else that also the lower, the interest rates drop and you can go refinance tomorrow, although you technically kinda can, but it's a more complex process, but every borrowing has a window, where, say if you borrowed for 20 years, they may have, seven years down the line, there's a window, it's called a call date, where you can call back the bonds that you, you sold, and then you, you refinance under a low, under what would possibly be a, a lower interest rate if that's available at the time, and then you would use that lower interest rates to buy those bonds that you're recalling back. Now, if it's, if, say rates drop drastically and we're not in one of those windows, that you still do it, it's just a little more complex process where you, you, I hate to, I'm not an expert in this, but essentially what you're doing is, you're still issuing more bonds, but then you're, you're using the money you borrowed to kinda pay the interest of that one, so you, you kinda have two going at once, and then when that call date comes, you, you, you take care of it. And essentially what you're doing is you're, you're investing the money, and like, I'm gonna get myself in trouble by getting too technical on this, 'cause I'll probably get it wrong, but essentially what you're doing is you're borrowing at the lower rate, you're, you're investing that money while you're holding it, so you're getting interest on it, you use that interest money to offset the bond, the interest that you're paying at the higher rate, until that window happens and then it drops. Alderman Bryce.
So could we not keep 375 and just borrow all of it and use the 375 towards something else in operational?
You can.
We can?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
As I said last year, this was my budget, now it's yours. So you guys can do what you want with it. I will, I will guide you the best I can on it, but you guys, you guys are in charge. Alderman Decker.
I need a clarification. On the statement, the estimated long-term impact to the medium home is approximately $17 in 2027, 22 in 28, 29 and 30, 13 and 31, and 0 and 32.
Yes.
Now, is that just with a single $5 million borrowing? Or is that with more than one $5 million?
That is borrowing every other year.
So that's more than one?
Continually borrowing every year and getting aggressive on our road program.
How many millions will that total?
40.
All right, so let me just go on the map here, because I don't have it in front of me. So 20...
I'm guessing that's 15 million.
I think you are correct. I would, yes, six years, $15 million, yes.
That is if we borrow it every other year. We're not approving every other year.
You're not approving every other year, however, if you wanna tackle our roads, they, they have a cost. And it's the only way you're gonna tackle them and get caught up.
Because this translates into 15 million.
It doesn't, it translates into whatever you do when, this year, that's it.
If it does, in the long-
That's it.
But, but use a scenario.
I, I'm, I'm, if we're talking about a total of 15 million over these five-year periods, it sounds like we're, we're committing future councils to this, and that-
That, that we can't do that. We are not doing that.
Okay.
It is, this might be a good al-
He said a five-year period, that would only, that would only-
A five-year period would be, yeah, over a five-year period would be, oh, 10 million, because it's only be two borrowings in it.
We haven't gotten to the third one yet.
Look at it like our cap, our five-year capital plan. So we're approving however millions this year that were for 2026. However, we have a plan in here that's, let's just say everything in here is, you know, $2 million, because it's probably roughly around $2 million for everything we're approving in the, in the capital budget. But everything, if you look for the five years out, is probably more, more like $10 million. We're approving the plan, we're only committing to the 2 million, not the whole amount. It's a plan, not, not a, the only thing you're committing to is 2026. Does that help?
Yeah.
Thank you. Alderman Schrader.
Yeah, I did, I'm just looking at the email. I had emailed Johnny about this to talk about, you know, because I was concerned too. If we're approving this budget, are we approving that we're borrowing every other year for sure? And, and her answer was no, I had you all copied in on this. So no, it's, we would have to go through it and approve it every time, every borrowing process. So we're not locked into anything, we're not locked into that amount. We could skip and not do it. So, I mean, there was an email on October 9th from Johnny, kind of, I had a bunch of questions about that too, because I was concerned, oh, we're gonna vote for this budget and then we're locked in? And that was, like, how can we lock in future councils? It didn't make sense to me. Along those lines too, I also asked her if we had to use Baird, and no, we're not obligated to use Baird. So, because I know Rick and I had a little back and forth about that at a meeting, where he was his comfort level, his choice, but that is not the case. We can discuss other options for financial advisors, and that is something I would like to do, have a talk with at least two other financial advisors to just pick their brains on this too. Because I, I felt, I'm sure Kevin's great, I just felt at a loss, like I wasn't fully capturing.
That's fine, and we can do that, we're just off the, off the agenda on that part. Alderman Delegee.
Yeah, and I don't know if this could be a correction or not. Just doing some quick math, as far as the impact to the taxpayer.
Yes.
$17 in 27, $22, three consecutive years.
Yes.
Is that correct? And then 13 in 2031, is that the 96, not 70?
Okay, sure. I'll trust your math on it.
And-
Now-
I, I believe it's $22 impact in all three of those years. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but-
That is, that is correct.
Okay.
So 22 each year, you mean?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay. See, I was kind of-
22 in 28, 22 in 29, 22 in 30.
Oh, and then 13, oh, okay.
I'll trust your, the math on it, I didn't do the math. I knew I had it spelt out in here.
And, and keep in mind too, that's for, I think it's $450,000 home, right?
Correct, it's medium home, yes.
Okay, because that's, I mean, we just all got reassessed.
That's where the median fell after the assessment. I got those numbers from the assessor.
I know, but I'm just saying, there's not that many-
And that's why also, if you're looking at the budget increase, I gave that whole spiel from a 200 to a $700,000 house.
Now, if we borrow money, does that affect, is that affected by a purchasing policy? So anything over 50,000, that has to be brought back to council? Because that's part of, is that the borrowing? Would that be, Chuck, would that be part of the purchasing policy?
I would assume, well, either way-
I'm just saying, I know we have to bring it back, but I'm saying, per our policy, we would have to do that.
No, I mean, it's gonna come back because it's a public works project. It's, it's gonna get approved through the, we, we bid our, we bid our project. We, we approve the bids, so it does get approved, yes. So the borrowing is one thing.
Technically, so technically, we have a double check on that.
Yes, there's a double check on it. But you'll already-
I just wanted to point that out.
And depending on the timing, you may or may not have the money already. So whoever we decide to go with for a financial advisor is gonna look at where we are now and make a recommendation that we're either gonna borrow yet this year, or we're gonna do it in spring, or maybe sometime in between. So, you know, they may have us wait, and then we borrow like right after the bids are out, or we borrow like ahead of time. You know, there's, there's all different things to look at. Any other questions? Alderman Bryce, you look like you're ready to say something.
I'm always like, yeah, ready to go. So is this where, like, because I am super in part, I am super in favor of borrowing for our roads project, and I think 5 million is a good amount. But I would like to take out the 375 and put that elsewhere in your operational budget. Like, maybe to hire another person or 12?
So we can, we can do that.
Or the health insurance, or whatever.
Let's, let's say if we're okay with the road program we're doing first, and then you can, then you can make a motion to it, do what you want with that. But I just kind of want like, are you guys comfortable with, like, reducing the road program and relying at least next year, or the next two years, I should say, on a borrowing to address our roads?
Yeah, I would like to borrow to address our roads, but, but move the 375 elsewhere.
We'll talk about the separate, okay.
We're talking about leaving the 375, not what she's talking about, leaving the ways presented.
Right, right now, we're talking about leaving this 375 and, and doing a borrowing.
I hate to say, you know, my feeling is I wanted the 750 instead. So, so, you know, and I can see a compromise in this, and I can see a borrowing to get things started. And, you know, thank God, or, we're blessed with the tax base, the way it came in from the reassessment, that it makes sense to start, start jump on some of this stuff. So jumpstart, I guess it would be the word.
So my one caution-
I'm comfortable.
My, my one caution, Alderman Bryce, would be, let's say, two years from now, our plan right now is to do this borrowing every other year. Two years from now, something happens and we just can't, we just can't justify doing that borrowing. And if you remove the road program altogether, you have nothing in there, and then you're gonna have to make some hard conversations. Not that 375's gonna buy you more than a sidewalk, at least buy something, or maybe some repairs or something. So it's something in there, you know, that's, I just wanna point that out.
If you, if you look at the long term, that 375 is 750 into two years of the 5 million. So then if you go into 10 years, where you're talking 25 million, that's 375 times 10. So you're at 3.75 million dollars. So it's something to fall back on, that's why I, you know, I don't wanna remove anything more than we have to, and that's why I wanna add things in, and I don't wanna add more than we have to, kind of like maintenance programs on the trail, you know. So these are things we gotta keep looking at that are gonna, you know, a gift that keeps on taking. So it's, it's, it's a shame, I mean, I use the example of the library parking lot. You know, do we wanna do it? No, but we, we have to maintain what's there. And, and that's, that's kind of what we were trying to do with, with this, this idea. And one last thing, sorry, Deb.
No, it's okay.
This 375 in two years equals 750, and I'm gonna go off subject here a little bit. We have not addressed the police station. So there's money available for other things that you gotta take a look at, where you wanna put the money, because there's things we have to take care of as well, not mentioning even DPW buildings. But anyway, go ahead.
So the, the one last thing on the 375, it also not only gives you something to have for a road program if you don't do the borrowing, it also gives you a relief valve in your operating budget if you are gonna continue doing the road program, and all of a sudden, we're look, but our, so that's outside the caps. We, you know, are, we're very tight on, on our revenue cap, that if for some reason we're forced to be looking at laying off people, and you don't wanna lay off people, you do have that 375 you can look at and make that substitution then. We're not there right now, but it just gives a relief valve in future years. Alderman Schrader.
Yeah, I have to say too, I called Ryan and I talked to him about it, because at first, I'm like, Rob, I didn't wanna take anything out of the roads, even if we're gonna borrow for the roads. And Ryan and I had that, I said, are you okay with this? And he said, yeah, he could work with it, he was good. Taking it completely out, I think, would be a horrible mistake. And in fact, like I said, I would like to take that 50,000 that we just found from the library costs that were $50,000 savings, I would like to put that onto the roads instead of wherever you put it. So I don't know if I have to make a motion for that, or, but I can't, I, taking anymore out of the roads, I think would be a serious mistake.
Alderman Wolf.
And in my point on the money for the roads is, and I mentioned this, this definitely has to be earmarked, even the 375, and tracking available. We need to know what was spent, how much of that is spent, where it was spent on a consistent basis, because I wanna make sure the 375 that we're using out of this money goes into the roads as well as the 2.5 million, if that's what we're gonna borrow for the first year.
It will, when Scott brings-
But I want some type of tracking on this so that we know that we borrowed 5 million, 2.5, we're gonna know, because you're gonna say these roads are gonna be done, but we don't know where the 375's gonna go. If that's, we need to do some repairs on some roads, or do a small road or something. I, I'd like to have the communication brought back to us, so we're not just putting an extra 375 into the budget, and it's, it's out there, so.
So, so just to be clear, the partial, this part of the road program is for new construction of roads, and it always has been. We have separate line items in the budget for like cracks and seals and maintenance and everything else. So those are different buckets. So if it's in this bucket, it will definitely, when we go out to bid, we're gonna include it in that pot of how much we're gonna be doing in the roads, and you will see that, because it's gonna, Scott's gonna come forward and say, you know, we're gonna, we can do X amount of roads, we're gonna redo all of Fountainwood this year. And I'm lying about that, but it'll be something like that, so.
Yeah, I just wanna, I just wanna point that out, so people know where the money's going. And, and, you know, we should have some follow-ups so we can keep it transparent, because, you know, in reality, I don't wanna spend, I don't wanna borrow the money. I mean, but in reality, we have to do something, so that, that's just my point, so.
Alderman Hamill.
I just wanna say, I had the same thought as Erica did, in getting rid of it all together. But after thinking about it, and with how tight the budget is and everything else, I think leaving it in there right now is a safe thing to do, just in case. You never know what's gonna happen down the road and, and future years. If we get rid of it and move it someplace else, which I would love to do, because we're, we need more employees in certain departments. But if, you know, times, times get tough, I'd hate to hire somebody and then let them go.
Yeah, yes, we do. We need more people in the police department, we need more people in public works, and we need to do something to address our fire at some point, so that's not an agenda.
And we all know that we're, we're very tax-conscious here. So, you know, do, do our work, and if it works, and it's in there, and it's a good thing, and we can keep our taxes at a decent level. I mean, my goal always has been is a safe, clean environment to live in, affordable as well. So we can, we can afford to raise a family out here decently, and if you're an elderly person, you can still live in your home without being overtaxed. So that, that's my goal, is, is to keep the services here as much as we can, and taxes as low as possible.
I believe this budget does that for all of you. It lowers taxes, it's homes, homes are more valuable, your taxes should go down in most cases, not all cases, depending on certain circumstances. And we're finally gonna be able to tackle roads, which is our number-one complaint that we get, besides speeding, probably, and yards, messy yards, but that's more particular to some people. Alderman Schrader.
Were we gonna get something from Scott about just tearing down the old PD? Was that supposed to be happening?
We can get that too. I mean, what was, what specifically were you looking for on that?
Just tearing down the old PD, I thought we'd been asking for this for a while, for just tearing-
We talked about that last meeting, we had, we had preliminary numbers on it without, you know, without putting it out to bid, but that was the 800,000 that we talked about.
I thought Deb asked for what the cost is to-
Square footage, to keep it running.
Maintain it currently.
Yeah, I asked for a bunch of information for, for all the costs on that.
I can address part of it right now, like the cost to keep it going. If you guys are intent on tearing it down, which I have no problem with, and you were not, we don't have any grand illusion that we're ever gonna do anything with that building, we can get the cost down to almost nothing, because I can completely shut off the power in the building and the sump pumps and all that. You will start getting mold in the building, but if we're tearing it down and no one's in there, we'll also ban anyone from using the building, except for the cold storage, which is a separate area, until you're done with it, that, there will be no cost on it. So that, that I've got Clayton working on, I don't have the exact path on that right now, but he's been working on that for the last week or so to try to get, so I can give you guys actual numbers, so.
Well, because I was asking for the complete cost on what that has been, what we pay for that every year, what we've paid for it since.
Right, and we, and, and we're gonna get that to you, trust me on that.
And just for tearing it down, not any parking lot, not any-
Correct, yes, we will, we can, we'll shoot you an email on that, and you can have it before you have to approve this budget.
Well, I was supposed to have it this week.
Well, you can't, I'm sorry, but we can't dictate times and getting stuff, we do have other things going on. And I respectfully, I, you just, I mean-
Well, this seems like a really important thing, that we should have this information.
And so is the-
This is budget.
So is the, I know, but so is the other parts of the budget that we've been working on, and we just talked about, we are shorthanded in all the departments, so we're working our best we can. Alderman Decker.
How much is, how much will 375,000 buy in terms of road maintenance?
It's not maintenance, it's road building. So it, not maintenance, it's like, we're gonna replace a road or resurface a road.
Well, you wanna know how much it is per square foot, per mile, that'll tell us, right? You got an idea on that?
At the microphone, please, because some people watch this.
Thank you. Best-case scenario, no undercutting, no EBS, excavation below subgrade, about a mile. Worst-case scenario, we could be trying to do part of a road.
So that could be a mile on top of 2.5 million, so figure out how many miles that would be. So you would just add possibly another mile.
We're averaging right around for 750, about 2.2 miles. It's getting less as we run into more troubled roads, where you have to start digging EBS, and, and that, you can't go as far, you know. But again, it also depends, like Ryan said, if it's just two-inch mill and overlay, we can go a lot farther. You know what I mean? It's, it just all depends on the means and method, and hopefully, the roads don't have any issues when you open them up, so.
The other thing that we need to consider is our specs that we're gonna be putting out for the road program next year. If we, if we go with this borrowing plan, are gonna be, it's gonna be a much bigger project. So you get a lot more competitive bids on it, when they can come in and know they're gonna be doing a lot at once. So, you know, we may have, say we got one mile for every 500,000 before, you might get a mile and a quarter now, or a mile, you know, mile and a half or something. So we will, we should get more bang per buck, because we're buying in bigger bulk.
I mean, if you think about it, you're-
And gas is coming down.
Yeah, if you think about it, it's 750, and then now if you do the 2.85, you increase the budget by four times. That's, that's a huge difference on a cost for a contractor to bid a road. They're gonna get more competitive for sure for us, so.
Alderman Decker.
So what is our budget right now for road maintenance, roughly?
$100,000.
$100,000?
Yes.
Is that consistent with- Is that consistent with years past?
Uh, I increased it, I believe, in twenty-two or twenty-three, because we were falling behind on crack sealing, and then one year, we, when we had to make budget cuts, uh, we took, we took it all the way down to twenty-five thousand to balance the budget, so one, which was last year, we didn't do any crack sealing, anywhere. The twenty-five thousand dollar helped me pave a couple driveway approaches and then spot pave throughout the city where coal patching would happen, but it's, this is why it's crucial, because we keep on taking out of that, that we start to catch up, so, hundred thousand dollars a year, sixty to seventy thousand dollars of that comes to crack sealing, now maybe a hundred twenty-five thousand if we add the trail portion of it, to it, and operating.
So, in our current operating budget, do we have a hundred thousand now for road maintenance?
For the future pro, yes.
Okay, and then this three hundred and seventy-five thousand is for road building?
Correct.
Correct.
Yep.
So is a hundred that you have is enough to maintain the roads for maintenance?
In the grand scheme of things, it's enough, but, I mean, we live the budget daily with you guys, so, yeah, it's, it's keeping us-
I mean, we're putting new roads in, that'll, that'll spread things out too, cuz you won't do maintenance on them.
The biggest thing is, what you'll see after we're done with our PZ rating, that color chart that we had, obviously didn't get any better, got worse, so my goal is to keep pumping more of the sixes and sevens and eights, and to keep on that, the ones that we crack sealed in twenty twenty-three, which was the last time we did the rating, all stayed because of the crack sealing, so that's how we can maintain and focus on the fours and down, and get over that hump that we're trying to, or at least get closer.
Can I answer your question? All right. Anything else? Any other line items that people wanna address within the budget? If you do, and anything pops up this week, can you please let us know ahead of time, because the, or not next, in the next two weeks, because the public hearing and the hopefully adoption of the budget is at the next meeting, and we would like to be able to have that incorporated into the documents that we're presenting. Doesn't mean you can't make changes on the floor, we've done that before, but it's better if we can get those, that information ahead of time, all right?
So we, do we need to touch this part?
Yes, Jenny will be, that's our next item.
All right.
Hey, Rick.
I'm sorry, what?
One more question, I, hearing how much it costs, like, per mile of road, like, is there, I don't wanna say this, is, is there any thought that the two and a half million every year is enough?
Well, I'm sure if you talk to the engineers, they'll say they'd like ten million.
Well, I, I understand that, I, I guess-
Brian, is it enough?
The point I'm getting at is, um, do we have, do we have the ability to do our first borrow at the end of twenty-five?
Yes.
Cuz if we do our first borrow at the end of twenty-five, we don't borrow in twenty-six, and we borrow in twenty-seven, then you would have the full five million to jumpstart the road program in that first year. It's just something to think about.
So, it's not a matter of that, there, so it's more complicated than, the timing on it's more complicated, because we have existing debt, and they try to time when stuff falls off, and when you add new stuff, um, but definitely a discussion we're gonna have, one of the things that we, they may wanna look at of doing the borrowing this year yet, if you guys approve that for next year, do that two-year borrowing this year would be because we, if you look at our debt schedule, it actually does drop next year, because we have debt falling off, so it's gonna go from here down and then go back up again, it might make more sense to do the borrowing, impact next year's debt service, and keep it more level going across, and gives you, i- it, there's, there's all these things to look at that, like I said, I'm just a small town mayor, I, there's experts that can explain it better. All right, can I answer your question? All right, anything else? Thank you, this was very productive discussion. Moving on to new business, discuss, review, recommend water and sewer utility budgets. Jenny, still awake?
Okay, I'm gonna start on the sewer utility fund. So the sewer utility serves approximately nine thousand two hundred customers, the budget provides for staff, materials, and equipment to operate and maintain the sanitary sewer collection system. The last rate increase we had for sewer was two percent, and it was in January of two thousand ten. A summary of the operating revenues and expenditures can be found on pages one and two, revenues are generated almost entirely from user service charges, with any increases primarily due to community growth. The majority of basic operating expenses consist of MMSD-related capital user charges. Non-operating revenues and expenditures include interest earnings and connection fees. The sewer utility currently carries no debt, as all outstanding debt was paid off in two thousand five. Capital projects are outlined on page three, they were discussed at a previous committee of the whole meeting, and doesn't include any changes. The schedule that you'll find on page four presents changes in working capital within the four sewer utility funds, as defined on the final page of the document. Each fund is projected to maintain a positive balance and a healthy financial position, consistent with the results of the twenty twenty-four audit. No significant changes are reported for the upcoming year. Although rates are recommended to remain unchanged for twenty twenty-six, a rate adjustment will likely be proposed in the next few year, years to address rising operational capital costs. So, do you have any questions on sewer?
So, we're, we're carrying a, a plus balance, am I seeing that somewhere on here?
Carrying a positive fund balance?
Yeah, where's, where's that, how much is that?
I mean, I think our total fund balance is-
Fourteen million?
Oh, is that, that, okay, just estimate fourteen million?
The working capital that we have available is about fourteen million in sewer.
Is it on here?
That's not our total-
Where is that?
That's on-
Page four.
Okay, down at the bottom, okay, working capital, okay, fourteen million, but it's showing a negative three percent roughly, that we're, we went down?
Correct. Each year, yeah, we tend to use some of that fund balance, which is why we wanna look at a rate increase.
So, yeah, so we're doing, so we don't need an increase, okay, I remember we did that one in-
Yeah, right now, we're not, we're not proposing any rate increase, um, but because we are using some of that fund balance to almost supplement rates at some point, we, it's probably something we should look at in the next few years, we don't need to next year.
And that's regulated too, right?
No.
I mean, that's not?
No.
Okay, it's not like the water, it's not regulated?
No, correct.
Okay, so, just for conversation, what is the minimum balance that we would like to carry before we, I mean, is there, have we looked at that?
Our policy states that we have at least three months of operating expenses, so based on this year's budget, it's one point eight five million.
One point eight five million, so we have a lot of three months.
However-
Okay.
That we, that working capital is also used for any infrastructure upgrades, or, you know, we have to replace sewers and our catch basins and lift stations, and all that comes out of that, so, yes, you could have three months' worth of operating on there, but then everything you do in that, we're gonna be borrowing far through the utility.
Okay, I just wanna get, cuz we're not running this out in charts like we do other things, so I just wanted to have a, have a, a feel for where we're headed and what we're doing.
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Aldman Decker?
I'm sorry, I missed it, does, is the sewer carrying any existing debt?
No.
No.
It's not, okay. And, um, on page three, uh, lift station upgrades, six hundred and sixty-five thousand, um, which lift stations are, is that, do you know?
I don't have the capital budget in front of me, but you do.
Yeah, we went through that.
It was talked about in the capital budget requests.
Okay.
Wanna come up to the microphone?
They have some, uh-
So that was McShane Lift Station that we talked about probably three, four years ago, um, we need to reline that pipe, and then there's a vault that's starting to decay, all the concrete's coming off, and there's rebar showing, um, we pushed it back, we talked to the mayor about this too as well, so, instead of just going in, you have to do it all at once, cuz there's a bunch of bypassing involved, so, um, we got a couple quotes on it, so it's better just to come in, do it all at once, so when they buy, when we talk bypass, and they gotta bring in bypass pumps to pump the sewage, all the way down to a manhole, which comes back into McShane Lift Station, so to have them set up once, we talked about just doing the vault, now we're gonna do it all at once, the lining and the vault, all at one time.
For, for those watching at home that aren't following this, uh, our McShane Lift Station handles all of our sewage going out of the city with the, with the exception of a small amount that goes to the Ryan Creek Interceptor.
And a little bit to the salt that goes to Norway.
But, but probably eighty-five percent, if not higher?
Ninety.
Ninety percent, so when we do, when he's talking about bypassing there, when we shut down that lift station to replace it, you're literally like running a hose from the lift station before it and taking it to a pipe after it, otherwise it all, the whole city, the whole city backs up.
Not good.
So this doesn't include the, uh, Aggett Lift Station?
This has nothing to do with Aggett Lift Station.
No.
No.
This is our main lift station, everything from here goes MMSD.
Right, okay.
So if you look at your twenty twenty-six capital projects, one point one nine million, one point two million is roughly three months of what we should carry, so we're, we're fine, I mean, that's, 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 uh, that's pretty good that we have that much money available.
Well, that's the capital only, that's not operating, so.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, I did say capital, I should've read that, yeah, I even said it.
Any other questions on sewer?
Well, I was looking at the dollar bonds.
All right.
All right, so moving on to water, Water Utility serves approximately forty-five hundred customers, it's responsible for the storage treatment and distribution of water throughout the system. The budget provides for the necessary staff supplies and equipment to maintain these operations. The Water Utility System of Accounts tracks all costs associated with the operation and maintenance of wells, towers, booster stations, and the distribution system of reservoirs. The last rate increase of four point one percent took effect of, on January first of this year, twenty twenty-five. A summary of operating revenues and expenditures can be found on page one, both revenues and operating costs are projected to remain relatively stable compared to the prior two years. Capital projects were discussed at a previous committee of the whole meeting, and no changes are proposed to those at this time. The Water Utility Funds operates similar, similarly to those of the Sewer Utility. The schedule on page three outlines the changes in working capital within the four funds of the utility, which are defined on the final page. Each fund is projected to maintain adequate balances, consistent with the results in the twenty twenty-four audit. However, rising capital costs and inflationary pressures are anticipated to impact future budgets. Because the Water Utility is now not eligible for a simplified rate case adjustment, a full rate case study will likely be proposed in the next couple of years to help offset the increase in costs and ensure the continued financial stability of the system.
Questions?
And we're, we're finding what other communities have been raising their rates, right? Have you seen that? So-
So, so it's important to track where we're at and make sure that, you know, we do our simplified and full-blown rate cases as needed, so we don't have a big bubble.
Which is happening right now in a lot of communities.
Which is happening all, all, all around, yes.
Did I hear correctly, we just had a rate increase?
We did.
We did.
We, in the past, have applied for a simplified rate case every year, we, we're informed this year that we cannot, because we, the class of our utility has changed.
We, we'll talk more about that in closed session, there's a closed session on some of that tonight. Any other questions on, yes, sir?
These, these are operating budgets for water and sewer, is it?
Correct.
Operating budget, okay.
All right.
Wait, Jenny?
Mm-hmm.
Did, was that fifty thousand dollars put on here somewhere?
Fifty thousand dollars of-
That you were talking about, that you, the email that you got sent us today, was that?
Yep.
Where is that on here?
That is, you're talking about the money that I put back in?
Yeah.
Well, you don't see the detail here.
Okay.
But it is in, it's in the total operation, operation and maintenance expenses that would, would have brought it down. I can show you a more detailed version later, if you'd like, or tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, yeah, if you wanna-
I believe that's under administrative expenses, isn't it, or not?
I don't remember.
Aren't we going to plug that in?
Yes, it is administrative.
We did, yeah.
It's in that eight twelve, seven fifty-seven line item.
Um, page one.
Can I just ask why it was put in here, just how that was determined?
Because typically, we don't do a reimbursement from water and sewer, that is used in emergency purposes to help balance the budget, and it helps pay for expenses that are used by utility employees at the public works buildings.
What do you mean, emergency what?
If our budget is not balanced, we have too many expenses, we can take reimbursement from water and sewer funds to pay for some of the public works buildings and expenses that the utilities employees are using over there.
So the utility can be using services that the overall tax, so the utilities are paid for just by the users, so the water, our water coverage, what do we have, around forty-five hundred homes?
Yes.
Yeah, well, forty-five hundred homes are on our water utility, we have ten thousand homes in the community, ten thousand homes are, are, are property tax-based, forty-five hundred of the utility users, the utility may be using services that are paid for by people that have like a well, so you can, to make them whole, you can reimburse the general budget, you're operating with money from the utility, because the utility's actually using their services that are being paid for by non-users.
Okay, so, we took fifty thousand out of the capital budget, or operating for library?
No, we took out of operating, so we moved, we moved fifty thousand into, from, that the, that the water utility was reimbursing the taxpayers for expenses that the taxpayers overall were incurring from the water utility, cuz not everyone's on the water, like, you're not on, I don't believe you, you-
No.
Yeah, so, like, you, um, were, there's, you make the argument that your tax dollars are using to supplement some of the water utility, so to make you whole, you can do a transfer.
Okay, so, so my tax bill says the water utility gives me a credit?
It doesn't show up on your tax bill, it's just, I mean, it's, it's such a minute, it's-
Yeah, cuz the question I have is, why are we moving fifty thousand into a, a fund that's not used by every taxpayer?
We're not moving it into, we're not take, look at it the other way, we're not taking it out, originally we did, now we're not taking it out, we put it back.
Yeah, cuz if I'm not, you, you should be paying for water by usage only.
Correct.
So which is different, but water is by usage only.
They're both, I mean, there's people that aren't, don't have either, they have the subject, yeah.
Right, right.
So that's why, that's why that, that ability is there, that you can legally take expenses from the utilities that are using, like, say Ryan's, say, say Ryan's, uh, guys are helping, like, our trucks or something, are using, are assisting the utility with something, probably not a good example, but there's something like that, where there are cases where our non-utility employees are helping out with that. Aldman Hamill?
We originally took money out of water to balance the budget.
Added it as revenue to general fund.
Correct, yes, and then once the mistake was found with library salaries, that fifty thousand went back in.
It went back.
Correct, correct.
So operating, general fund operating is not losing anything, if anything, they would be gaining revenue if we needed to use money from the utilities.
Well, Conamawoc would be a good example with their, they have an electric utility, the city owns the power plant, or the power, they use that to lower their, they use extra funds from that utility to lower their tax rate, this is something similar, but on a much smaller level.
I just wanna make sure that we're not using taxpayers' dollars to supplement water usage by people who are paying for water.
It was, no, it's the other way around, we'd be using the utility to supplement the taxpayers, or reimburse, actually, it's not even supplement, it's reimbursing them for their actual costs.
Okay.
Any other questions on this? Yes, Aldman Decker?
So this fifty thousand dol- So this fifty thousand dollars from the library, where did it, where is it ultimately headed?
Where is it what?
Where is it ultimately headed? Where where are we?
Well, it was never really at the library. There was, there was an error as far as how we calculated a part-time employee to be full-time.
Okay.
Realized that, reduced their payroll to be appropriate to what their actual costs are.
Okay.
And then that freed up extra money in the operating budget, which we had used part of the utility to supplement their cost to the operating, and we just put it back.
Just kind of went right over me.
Sorry.
So.
The initial budget, say it was a hundred thousand dollars, we realized that there was a formula error. Now it's seventy-five thousand dollars. So now we have twenty-five thousand dollars too much. So we're gonna give it back to where we took it from.
Okay, all right. Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Anything else?
All right, moving on. Discussion on cell phone use policy during meetings. Alderman Hamel, this is your request.
I thought it was something important to discuss regards to not using cell phones when we're sitting at any meeting. It's, I believe they should be put away. They're too easy to look at, especially, you know, I did it the last meeting when I got two texts from, from work. We shouldn't be doing that, no matter what it is. I think it's inappropriate, rude, and disrespectful to other people up here, to city employees, to constituents as well. We need to be paying attention to the meeting and discussion at hand. You know, twenty years ago, we didn't have the ability to check support scores, get texts or anything like that. Now we do, and we, I feel we need to put them away, keep, keep them turned off, not look at them, not use them. If somebody has an emergency or family members trying to get in touch with you, there's a way to do it. There was a way twenty years ago. Call the non-emergency number at the police department. If you're taking notes, it doesn't have to be on your phone. You can pen and paper. You know, I just think that it's too easy of a distraction to have your phone out all the time. And I'd like to see a policy stated on that. I'm not sure what it should be. Just keep them put away, keep them turned off, put them, you know, on a table someplace so they can't be used. Also, you know, I think, well, first off, it needs to go for all meetings as well. I'm sure we all turned our phone on by accident, rubbing it in our pocket or something, and all of a sudden you go to use your phone and your camera's on. Or, you know, it, you sent a crazy text to somebody because it it just turned on. I know I've done it. I'm pretty confident other people have done that, too. They pull out their phone, and it's not where they left it. It's not in the lock screen or anything like that. So how we should do that, you know, that that can be open for discussion. You know, leave them in your pocket, leave them turned off. Don't look at them. That's probably the most easiest way. Next step, put them on the table. Worst-case scenario, give them to Jeff. And I know he probably doesn't want them.
Yeah.
So that's probably out of the question on that one. So I just want to bring that up because it's a distraction. We've all done it, or most of us done it. I know I've done it. I've looked at it when I see a text come in, and it's work-related, and I'll respond. And I, shame on me, I shouldn't. And I know other people do that as well. So I would like to see some type of policy developed to eliminate that.
Comments or questions? Alderman Schrader.
I'm just wondering, what prompted this?
Well, I see people using it, you. I looked at it last week. I received three texts last week from realtors. I shouldn't be doing that. I see you doing it. I can't see Eileen, I can't see Tom. Dennis hasn't done it. I know Rob and I have gone on our phone to look up stuff and look at maps, but we can have that brought brought up and discuss. I just think, you know, the main thing is if we're on our phone, we're being disrespectful and rude to everybody up here, to city employees, department heads. It shouldn't be done.
Well, I can say, I can't see what you're looking at from here, so I don't know how you can see what I'm looking at.
Well, I can tell when you're on the phone. I can tell a lot of people when they're on their phone. But so here's another thing. If you don't want to do it, you know, call a person out and say, what's so important that you have to look at your phone? You want to share it with everybody.
I can tell you right now, I take notes all day long on my phone. I have, I read my notes while I'm in my meetings. I just looked up emails. I look up things when people are talking about how much more a police chief is making in New Berlin. I look up to see what their population is. I am constantly using my phone. I use it all day, every day. I have two young children that could need me in an emergency, and I have no intention of putting my phone away to, because you're not comfortable with me having my phone out. I don't call anyone. I don't take any calls. My ringer's off. My, you don't hear my notifications go off. I think this is the most, and I think this is absolutely ridiculous, ridiculous for one. And for two, can I just ask you how you got this on the agenda?
I asked politely before.
You asked politely? Did you email the mayor?
No, I called him up and talked to him.
Because I thought the policy was we had to email the mayor if we wanted something on an agenda.
Changing the subject.
Okay, can I get in? Okay. So, I mean, I actually literally have my phone out right now. And I would actually have no problem putting it away or giving it to Carrie in case Georgia, who is my eleven-year-old, would need me in an emergency. I would have no problems turning it over because it is rude, and it is disrespectful, and it is not giving our full attention. And yes, there's been times I've used it to look up stuff, but there's also been times I've used it to look at a text message, and that is rude, and read the text message. So, and also, if we're going into closed session, I might accidentally butt dial someone or something, and I would hate for that to happen. So I.
We can certainly leave them at a closed session if that's an issue.
Yeah, so I certainly have no problem with turning my cell phone over. I don't care. Putting it away, whatever you want.
And here's something as well.
And.
Wait.
I'm sorry.
Is anyone else?
I'm looking at my phone, I'm looking at my phone right now to look up.
Alderman, Alderman Hamel, go on.
I was gonna say, these tablets are hooked up to the internet, right? You can use a tablet to look up whatever you want to research on your phone. You don't need to use your phone.
Well, I prefer to use my phone. I use my phone all the time. I have all my notes on my phone. My notes are not on my tablet. I don't take my tablet home with me. And I'm looking right now, and as I Google it, there's nothing here that says council members are prohibited from using their phones or texting during meetings. It may be discouraged, and you can't text other aldermen because you could be forming a quorum, but what you're, this is, like I said.
Well, that's why I'm bringing up is.
Beyond ridiculous right now.
To have a policy. You can think it's ridiculous. That's one person's opinion.
So let me just weigh in a little bit on this. You you guys do have the right to do a resolution, either just a resolution or an ordinance on whatever rules of the common council you would like on that for behavior up here. So that's up, that's up to you guys. You know, if you don't want to do an outright ban of phones, maybe you put something in that, you know, create a policy that it's gotta be on silent. You can't accept texts. You can't text out. You gotta keep your communications. I mean, you could do something like that. You could do an outright ban. I mean, I, I get what you're talking about. I mean, it's killing me not being able to look at my phone right now to see what the brewer's score is. So if anyone knows and wants to shout it out, I'd be really happy. So, you know, but.
It's your fault.
But, yeah, but, I mean, you you guys do have the ability to conduct the behavior at the meeting on how you want. I'm not sure if there's any legalities as far as receiving or issuing communications during a meeting with people that aren't up here. I would suspect there probably is, but I don't know offhand. But, you know, I, I think you have lots of options here, or you can just leave it the status quo, but.
And I just brought it up for discussion.
All right.
You know.
Alderman Wolf.
The only, the only thing I would say is, if we're gonna do something, I I just believe that they should be not being used during closed sessions. I, you know, I have a problem with that. If there's a phone on, I mean, I don't know if anybody does it. I, I don't look around. I, I concentrate on the meeting and whatever, but a closed session is a closed session.
Any thoughts from that end?
I, I agree with Alderman Hamel about, like, it being seen as disrespectful surfing on the phone if anybody's doing that. My problem with it is, that's how, that's how I'd be contacted in an emergency. I'm sure that's how everybody up here would be contacted in an emergency, and I'm not gonna take that away from somebody. With that said, you would think emergencies are rare, so if that's what you're using it for, you shouldn't have it in your hand all the time. But that's my thought on it.
I kind of agree, Tom. I mean, I just, mine is right here. It's set down on silent right next to me. I'd never pick it up. I mean, if ever I do, maybe it's to look at the time or something, but the time's up there, but I, I don't pick it up.
Is, is there any interest in some sort of policy with guidelines that I could bring forward, and you guys can modify how you want? You know, we're not gonna, I'll be honest, if I come forward with something, it's not gonna be a ban. It's gonna be some etiquette with it, maybe. And then you guys can amend it and change as you want. At least gives you a starting point. Or are you guys happy just keeping it as is? I just need some direction, so.
Question I got is, are we the start? Are we the guinea pigs? What is New Berlin, Brookfield, what is the Congress, the Senate? I mean, I don't know. I don't know, you know, what do you, how do you, you know?
There are communities that don't allow them, but I mean, it's.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of questions.
But you guys can do what you want. It's, it's, just because somebody else does it doesn't mean you have to. It's, you're not breaking new ground on it, but, you know.
No, no, I understand. I just look at it as a whole. Like I said, the only, the only real dilemma I have is in closed sessions, if somebody's on the phone, but we shouldn't be on the phone in a closed session.
That I would agree. I mean, actually, I think the phone should be left out of closed session altogether.
Well, I bring it in because I don't want to leave it out.
Right, that or turn it off, you know?
Like I said, you can see mine just sits down next to me, so if it's a closed session, and you know I'm.
So if yours is sitting like that, how do you know if you get an emergency? Would you know? How would you know?
It buzzes, it'll buzz.
Okay.
I got a low vibrate.
So you would know, yeah, okay.
You know, if you did that, then all city meetings would have to do it, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. It should be consistent.
Yeah.
I honestly, I think if people are focused on the meeting and paying attention to the meeting, how are they noticing people looking at their phones? I mean, this to me is just bizarre, actually, that it's come even on our agenda, especially during this time when we're working on a tough budget and a lot of things going on. And many people have asked for things on budgets and signed amendments to get things on budgets, and we can't get them on budgets. Bob can simply ask for something on a meeting nice.
Where do you guys want to go?
I move to leave things as is. I make a motion to leave things as is.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Did I hear two of you guys? Okay. I saw him. Okay. Any further discussion on this? Any interest in any guidelines or not? I mean.
I would like to see some guidelines. You know, what that is, you know? Like I said, I'm open for suggestions, you know, put it on vibrate. I just think it's, you know, rude to be looking at your phones.
If, then you would need to make a motion to amend if that's the case.
I'm making a motion to amend that, to establish guidelines and phone etiquette during meetings.
Can you, well, okay. Can you, is that, is that, yeah, you need to be more specific, I guess. Yeah.
I make a motion to amend that phones be upside down, turned on vibrate. I, I don't know how, you know, and no, I don't know how to say it, responding to texts unless it's an emergency. But then if it's emergency, you know, it just, I think it needs to be stated that's an emergency. So I don't know if that's still too broad or not.
So, so what I got from you is you're making a motion to amend, to create a policy that would require the phones to be on silent, no, no, what are you saying, accepting texts? You can't control that?
No.
So, so.
Replying.
Replying to a text. And was that all of it? Oh, and face down, did you say? I don't know if you said that or not.
Yeah.
Upside down.
Yeah, face down, yeah. Or in your pocket, your purse, whatever it might be.
Is there a second for that? Once, twice, dice for a second. All right. Any further discussion on the motion as, on the floor? All's in favor, say.
Could we also, I mean, because I think we all agree, like, for closed session, we shouldn't have them, right, in case we accidentally call someone or whatever?
Think it's a bad idea.
I mean, for closed session purposes, because that's supposed to be private.
Well, we already have closed session policies, right, Jeff? So you can't have further discussion. It doesn't matter if it's on a phone, an iPad, a computer, in person, when you walk away to the person down the street, it's, you, you, it's a closed session.
But I'm saying, like, if, like, someone accidentally pocket dialed someone, and they heard the closed session.
Well, that's after the fact, though. I think what you're talking about is when we're in a closed session, not to have a phone on. I think, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, not to have a.
Why don't we do one and then the other? Like, do the closed session second, if that's what you're gonna do?
Well, it's all one, it's all one item. It's not.
It's on there?
Yeah, it's one item. My, I understand where you, most of you guys here are coming from on this. Can we at least make a motion to keep the policy as is for regular meetings, but require all phones to be turned off, turned off during a closed session? Our, our closed sessions don't last at most half hour, forty-five minutes.
So I just want to say one thing, because when Lily got hit in the head with the hockey stick, I believe that was actually in closed session.
No, we were at the police department, you know, tour.
Our police department, but.
It doesn't matter.
I'm just, I'm just saying, so turned off maybe, but.
Can I just ask, who's gonna be the phone police? And do we really have time for this?
You're on your honor, right?
Why don't we do this during the closed session? Our phones are off, on vibrate in front of us. They're off, or not, you know what I'm saying? They're in front of you, so you can't pocket dial. It's sitting in front of you. You can see people's phones.
And that's what I was asking for, to have some sort of, like, where they're not gonna accidentally get pocket dialed or whatever.
I don't ever have mine so I can pocket dial someone, so.
Alderman Wolf.
Okay, I'm out of kindergarten. I don't want to be punished for things I don't do already. And if somebody's violating it, and we see it, just point it out. I, I'm, I'm past, I mean, I'm getting too damn old for little things here. Don't punish me for things I don't do. And, and, and if you want to point out somebody and make exceptions on it, do that, but leave me out of it.
I think the point's been made, so I think you guys are good with voting. Okay? All's in favor of the motion to keep our policy as is, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right. Close session.
Wait, you got a permit, please?
Oh, sorry, wait, yep, I missed an item. New business, discussion of discounting permit fees for flood victims. Does anyone have any objections for the people that are going through their floods? We can't waive it altogether unless we want to supplement it, but because of where our permitting system works, we, we pay an outside contractor to do all of our inspections. They get a percentage of the permit, but any of our in-house costs, we can waive, which would at least lower the cost of the permit to whatever point we can. And I'd like to at least be able to do that small amount for the people that are, you know, trying to rebuild after this mess. Any objections to that?
So this is like building permits?
Yeah, yeah. So my house got washed away, and I have to rebuild my kitchen walls and everything, and I'm coming in for my permit to do that, my electrical. and everything, and I'm coming in for my permit to do that, my electrical, whatever.
So how do we police that?
We will ask them, and they're going to be on their honor, and, you know, the inspectors, I mean, we'll know if it's a brand-new construction house, if they're asking to have their permits waived.
Yeah, I just want to be, you know, someone building a brand-new.
No, no, well, well.
House on the lake.
And Wendy will, Wendy will ask them, like, when they come in, you know, just let us know if this is a flood issue.
And is there expiration date on that?
Next six months. You guys okay with?
I mean, it should expire, otherwise it's going to be, it'll be out there forever, so.
Well, hopefully, yeah. I mean, if we have more floods in six months, I'd grant back.
And if somebody comes in after that.
We're just saying for flood victims, we're not, you know, so they're still rebuilding after six months, they probably had it pretty bad.
Yeah.
So.
Well, some people might wait because of no insurance, they might be doing pieces, so I understand that. So I don't have a problem extending it if people start coming in on a personal, a individual label.
I mean, this is something I can do administratively, I just want your blessing on it. So, you guys okay with it? Alderman Decker?
What's the level of discount? Is it a percentage?
It's different for everything, because there's some things that the cost of the permit is a lot of in-house staff time, which we can waive altogether. And some of it is, most of it, there's hardly any in-house, and it's all Jared going out and his company, so that would have less of a discount. So it's, it's a case-by-case basis. We'll just promise to do what we can on it. Everyone good with that? Thanks. I didn't think there would be an issue, but I wanted to bring it up. All right. Want to read the motion to close session? No, I, that's just an administrative thing I can do myself. I just, you know, wanted to let you guys know.
It's, it's just an administrative thing, it's not anything the council?
You guys want to vote on it, I have no objection to it, that's fine. But, I mean, literally, this is, all, all I'm doing is altering, you know, if somebody come into the window on whether they're being charged on a permit. It's not a big deal.
Yeah, but I think the council should vote on it.
And let's do it whole.
I totally want to vote. It just, I think, I think we should do things the right way.
All's in favor, say aye.
Is the right way.
I mean, I need a motion first. Can you, someone make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to do a roll call vote for the council to be okay to waive the administrative fees by the city of Muskego for the flood victims on their rebuilding.
Get a second?
Second. Who's second?
Eileen.
It's not waived, it's discounted?
No, the administrative fees would be what we'd be waiving, which is our cost of it. The actual cost that goes to, like, Jared or anything, that, that would be passed along. It, it turns into a discount, but it's the administrative part.
Okay, thank you. Are you ready? Are you ready?
Roll call.
Okay. Other person, Wolf.
Yes.
Hamel.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Rice.
Absolutely.
Schrader.
Yes.
Dilghi.
Yes.
Madden.
Yes.
Passed unanimously. Thank you. Notice this closed session.
Following the conclusion of consideration of the above portion of its regularly scheduled agenda, the common council will meet to vote on a motion to convene in closed session for discussion, action relative to the following. One, discussion on Public Service Commission notification. Two, discussion regarding Waukesha County, case number 2025 CV 001935 for F Street Kirkland 1 LLC versus City of Muskego. And to take such further action is maybe appropriate with respect to such matters. A closed session for the above purpose is authorized pursuant to provisions of WISSTAT Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Upon conclusion of the closed session, the common council will reconvene in open session to consider its public agenda, including motions to recommend approval or rejection of the above-listed deliberations or any of the public agenda items that have not been acted upon.
Well, I need a motion first.
Motion to move into closed session, second.
Roll call vote.
Other person, Wolf.
Yes.
Hamel.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Schrader.
Yes.
Dilghi.
Yes.
Madden.
Yes.
There's a quorum that passed. Just those, yes.
We are in closed session. We will only be coming out of closed session for the purposes of adjourning. Everyone have a great night.